Corey Clark, come forward, please. Corey is praised for her outstanding customer service and positive attitude. She builds strong relationships with patrons, offering personalized recommendations and making everyone feel special. Corey also supports her colleagues without hesitation. Corey is always there with a smile even on the toughest days and is always thinking of the patrons and her coworkers and how to make them smile and make a day a bit more fun all around. Corey, you want to come forward? Okay, let the record show that we are moving item 11A. Excuse me, 11, 12A, sorry. We're moving item 12A up to just after the consent agenda, which is item nine, and before contract review board actions, which is item 10. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Council Richardson and seconded by Council Randall to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion anymore? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, presentations and proclamations. We have three special presentations today. It's on, annually, we award awards to our city employees who excel in excellent customer service, innovative thinking, and the Pete Wasser Team Player Award. And we have two of those three employees here. So, and I'd like to, at this point, recognize the two that are here. The one that is not here is Vince Cobb from the water distribution. He's, he must be Vince Cobb. Right there, right in front of me. Okay, all three of them are here, great. Well, as long as I just embarrassed you, you might as well be first. Vince Cobb is recognized for his professionalism, his positive attitude, and problem-solving abilities. He consistently brings new ideas and solutions to the team and creates a collaborative environment. His consistent positive attitude is simply amazing and should be a mold for all employees to fit into. So, Mr. Cobb, why don't you come forward? We got a plaque for you and a check, a bonus check.
Ooh. Get us all.
Let's just set the stage for you next to, you have to shake all the hands of all the city council members. Okay, next is Tyler Caldwell from the Police Department Innovative Thinking Award. Sergeant Caldwell is recognized for his innovative approach to process improvements and mentoring within the police department. He developed a fleet management plan that improved fleet condition and reduced overtime, saving resources. He also led the successful National Night Out Against Crime event. Sergeant Caldwell distinguishes himself in his professional life as an innovative thinker who was always seeking process improvement and advancement. He tailors his approaches to each individual officer's strengths and weaknesses, as well as their learning style and motivations. Sergeant Caldwell, you want to come forward, please? And finally, finally, the lady that I see occasionally at the library, as a matter of fact, I just saw her about half hour ago. Corey Clark, come forward, please. Corey is praised for her outstanding customer service and positive attitude. She builds strong relationships with patrons, offering personalized recommendations and making everyone feel special. Corey also supports her colleagues without hesitation. Corey is always there with a smile even on the toughest days and is always thinking of the patrons and her coworkers and how to make them smile and make a day a bit more fun all around. Corey, you want to come forward? Okay, item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. So, those of you that are here for the animal ordinance, you will have a chance to comment on that if you would like, but not during this portion. This is for items that are not on the agenda. So, has anyone signed up to speak? No? Okay. Item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to start with reporting to the council that after a very robust process, I'd like to reintroduce a familiar face known to many of us here and introduce our new Public Works Director Dale McCabe. He was the unanimous selection and recommendation of the interview panel. We all know Dale, he's been with the city for quite some time, and he'll have some overlap with Mr. Anderson as he heads closer and closer to retirement. And I just wanted to make that announcement, we're really looking forward to working with Dale and continuing the good legacy that the Public Works Department has. So, thank you very much, Dale. Dale's first effective day will be March 3rd, but we've already got him, you know, pretty, pretty at work. So, it'll be some good overlap. A couple other things here, I attended the Urban Renewal Meeting last week, which I think we'll have a couple different reports on from some of the councilors, along with the Airport Board Meeting and a meeting with Mayor and separately, Councilor Ring, who cannot be here this evening, but he provided some comments to both myself and the mayor. We've been continuing our budget work and my compliments to our department heads and staff for working on a new and very robust process that our Finance Department, and in particular, Angie Wilson, has been spearheading. This is part of our new budget book, and it is a significant amount of work, but I think it will pay good dividends in the end. We had our open house for the Federal Street Plaza a couple weeks ago. Again, there'll probably be a couple other reports from the council on that. And we have another ad hoc Federal Street Committee meeting this coming Wednesday. We have a Tourism Services Request for Proposals posted. This is for the Tourism Services Contract that we've been talking about for the past year or so, and that closes on March 25th. And I just wanted to flag for the council that we received a substantial number of responses to the city's local agencies and nonprofit application process. This is somewhat evolving process that we've been going through over the past couple years. And this has a variety of different requests from social, you know, general social benefit to tourism requests. And I wanted to flag this item for the council because of the TLT ordinance that was passed last fall. There's going to be some substantial restructuring and rearranging through the upcoming budget process. So, this is, this is going to be a significant discussion at the budget meeting come May and just flagging it as, as we, as staff continues to work through that process. And I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Klebs? Okay, hearing none. Item eight is city council reports. We'll start on my left with Councilor Brunyan.
Quiet week. Got on vacation, no city events, several citizen contacts today about issues that are before us.
Council Richardson.
Thank you. Briefly, Mr. Mayor, I attended the Federal Street Plaza Open House. Week and a half ago, it was thought very productive. I counted 65 people on the floor at the opening and then lost track of who was coming and going. So, I think it was probably more than that. So, a good showing. Attended Traffic Safety also last week. And participated as a board member at the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting last week. And you probably all have heard the news or read the news by now that we made a decision to move forward on the Tony's Lot, directing staff to negotiate with the fermentation hub partners to hash out specifics of a project over the next six months. And that's my report.
Thank you. Council Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended an Airport Commission Meeting last Friday. All systems are green and go. Urban Renewal I did attend, and we received a report. And I've been talking to constituents, constituents quite often today. So, it's about the animal changes to the ordinance. That's, that's my report for this week.
Thank you, Councilor. Under my report, on February 11th, I attended the Fort Dells Museum Board Meeting at the New County Building. And from that discussion, I think it'd be prudent for the city council to entertain one or more members of that board to come before the city council, like they, like some other commissions and committees do, and give us a report on the previous year activities. And so, I think we can look forward to that happening, I believe, in March. You know, says the city clerk. February 18th, I did a radio interview with Al Wynn on KODL Radio with our new city councillor, Ben Ring. And on February 21st, I had a meeting with the new executive director at the Dells Art Center. And on February 21st, I had a meeting with the new executive director at the Dells Art Center. A delightful lady and I'm very enthusiastic about her taking over. Her name is Ellen Woods Potter. And again, I think she'll be a real asset to the community and to the art center. Today, I attended a meeting of the beautification and tree committee. And I also had a discussion today with councillor Ring. He has taken an interest in the performance evaluations for our employees coming up in May, I believe, is what we do every year for our city attorney and our city manager. And every year it seems that councillors volunteer to look through the process and see if we can make any improvements. It seems that every year that never happens. That's not to say we don't have a good process, but I think there's some members that think it might be improved. So with that, I'd like to ask if there's any volunteers on the city council who would like to join councillor Ring and me to look over our performance evaluation process and make any improvements that we deem necessary.
I, I will. I'll volunteer.
Well, I have three volunteers. I can only have one.
I think two volunteers.
Oh.
I haven't really breathed loudly onto the microphone.
Then I'll let the youngsters go.
Councillor Randall? All right, I'll be councillor Randall, myself and councillor Ring. Thank you very much for your interest. And finally, today marks the last council meeting for a gentleman and a dedicated staff member who's been with the city of Dallas for 35 years. 37, who's counting? 37 years. Mr. Dave Anderson, our director of public works, who being the modest man that he is, really didn't want to make a big deal about his leaving the city. So with that, he doesn't want us to recognize his responsibility, for example, for working with multiple state and federal agencies and participants to increase the capacity, efficiency and resiliency of a critical piece of the municipal water supply. And of course, I'm talking there about the Dog River Pipeline. And being modest, he didn't want us to mention his responsibility for leading the city through working with Google to provide water resiliency and redundancy to our water and sewer systems, acquiring very valuable water rights and constructing an aquifer and storage recovery system that will improve the city's water supply citywide, all at no cost to the city. He didn't want us to mention any of these accomplishments and there really are too numerous to mention here. So one of the things we did do was give Dave a small token of our esteem, which is a card. We'd like you to come forward and get the card. It was signed by all the council members and with appreciation for, for a job that really had, I don't know, anybody can describe the excellent job you did for, and the dedication. 37 years, let the record show.
The marching band is not quite ready.
You know, the mayor said card, not car.
Mr. Mayor, if I can. About a month and a half or so ago, Dave was on the KODL coffee break. And I have mentioned this to our city manager and others. If you really want to know the history of public works in the Dells and what has transpired, that was a great primer that you did that day and it's recorded under the archives of the KODL coffee break. Well worth, well worth the lesson. It was very good.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item nine, which is the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any councillor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have two items on the consent agenda. First, approval of the February 10th city council meeting minutes. And second, a resolution concurring with my appointment of Jan Oldenburg to the beautification and tree committee. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
McGlothlin will second.
It's been moved by councillor Randall and seconded by councillor McGlothlin to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now the change in the agenda, we're moving item 12A up to the forefront, which is a discussion on proposed amendments to the Dallas Municipal Code in relation to animals. Is it?
I feel started off.
Our city manager will start the discussion off with a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city attorney and I will be kind of tag teaming this staff report. And before turning it over to the city attorney to review some of the major categories of proposed changes up for discussion this evening, kind of wanted to give just a brief primer on where this is coming from and why we have it under discussion this evening. First and foremost, reviewing the animal and dog control ordinances that we have for the city of the Dells is listed as action 1.7 in the city council goal document. And over the past months and frankly, probably approximately about a year or so, a lot of different attention has been drawn to both the animal ordinance and the dog control ordinance through the transition of home at last to Columbia Gorge Humane Society. And some of the questions and deficiencies that were identified in the city's licensing program when it comes to dogs. And we expect to be bringing a dog ordinance for council discussion in the coming weeks and months as well. And so as we started on that approach, we really decided to take a holistic look at both of these ordinance ordinances as there was some overlap and some, some perspective that could be applied to both. Another item that brought this to the attention of city staff was the permit renewal process for animals within the city. And again, some deficiencies that were identified there in terms of different criteria for what a sanitary condition is, for example. And going through that process, that renewal process drew additional attention to this ordinance. Wasco County has also been conducting its own review of their dog ordinance for many of the same reasons. And we've had some constituent comments around animals throughout the city and, and other related topics specific to dogs such as a leash law. And so with all these different aspects and dialogue and city processes kind of swirling about, it really brought about a review of these two ordinances. Tonight, we'll be looking at animals and prompting some of this discussion and community feedback that we hope to get tonight. And so again, it's on the agenda, not as an action item, but as a discussion. We hope to get your feedback and the community's feedback to revise and amend this document and bring it back as an action item. And so I think with that introduction, I'll hand it over to Jonathan to touch upon some of the key category components of the revised animal control ordinance.
So the staff report starts on page 100 of the agenda packet and sort of sets the stage, as Matthew mentioned just a moment ago, as to why staff was diving into these proposed changes. I think that the key takeaway here is our approach to preparing this discussion item generally and, and the substance of the ordinance was really to put all of the ideas that have been developing over the past year, as Matthew mentioned, during our expansive review here and to put it all on the table. And we very much wanted this to be council's ordinance, as they all are. But in light of some of the, you know, the subject matter of this ordinance and given the public response that's here tonight, we tried our best to advertise it and to contact all the current animal permit holders and to contact as many community stakeholders as we could to have a meaningful discussion. And so frankly, all too often is this room filled with no one during our city council meetings. And so for what it's worth, I'm glad to see everybody that's here here. And everybody who wants to speak, I think the mayor will offer an opportunity maybe later in the meeting to get that going. Substantively, the changes are too many to list, but they're all really technical, except for the ones that are listed in the packet, which I think most of the people that reviewed this paid attention to. And that's very much a good thing because these are all the substantive changes. And so we can just go down the list, starting with number one on page 102. Adding a definition for what constitutes a continuous annoyance. And that's added significantly to address issues that have come up in the context of dogs barking. But as Matthew mentioned, we've tackled the dog ordinance and the animal control ordinance revisions sort of in tandem. And so this is a carryover from the dog control ordinance that you all might see later this spring. And we wanted this to have clarity to give our animal control officer, who's in the room here tonight, and our municipal judge and the public at large, clarity on what the city considers to be nuisance level noise that comes from animals. And in the case of dogs, it'll be the same definition, more or less. Actually, now that I mention it, we have our animal control officer here. We have our codes enforcement officer here and we have our chief of police here. And, you know, honestly, Nikki and Jake, if you wouldn't mind coming up and taking a seat if council has any technical questions, I think they'd value your perspectives on some of these, as I mentioned, technical changes. And so the first number one deals in, dealing with defining what a continuous annoyance is in the context of loud animals. Number two.
Is it the page number when you say that?
It's all still on page 102. Number two on page 102 is a definition for household pets. And we just made clear here that household pets, as defined, these do not require permits. So no animal permits are required for dogs, cats, hamsters, guinea pigs, et cetera, pot bellied pigs or other similarly sized animals determined by the police chief to be traditionally kept in cities as a household pet and readily available and lawful for purchase from a reputable pet store. Those types of animals do not require permits and are not really addressed in this ordinance. Number three on page 102 talks about the definition for what we call livestock. And it's limited to chickens, ducks, rabbits and other similarly sized fur bearing animals that are determined by the police chief as appropriate to allow in the city's corporate limits without harm to animal or public health, safety or welfare. And the difference between a household pet and livestock is that livestock's are, they're still allowed, but they require a permit. And we'll talk about permits here in just a second. Number four, we added a definition for what the city considers to be prohibited animals, which is effectively every other kind of animal that isn't a household pet or livestock. Those kinds of animals, and there's too many to list, but there is a list on page 102 as number four. Those kinds of animals are only allowed in the city limits if they're connected with, and they're only allowed in very limited situations in connection with an educational presentation or a circus or for registration management and all determined as the, by the police chief. And so that's, I just want to sort of hone in on these three definitions here and number two, three and four on page 102. Again, household pets do not require permits under this ordinance. Livestock require permits. Prohibited animals, they are prohibited. At least as presented, that's how the rest of this ordinance takes shape. Number five on page 102, we added a definition for non-conforming animals. And this is, this is a constitutional issue, just because the city outlaws animals today that were allowed yesterday. We still have to deal with those animals and they, they belong to people. And so we don't want to deprive people of, of the right to have that animal. And so we baked in a date here. It was just a placeholder date of July 1st, but the bottom line is, is like, let's say somebody has, you know, 400 chickens, but after this ordinance is adopted, if council decides to adopt this ordinance, you can only have 40 chickens. Well, those other 360 chickens, we're not asking you to go kill them. We're just saying that you can have them if you had them before July 1st or any other arbitrary date. You just have to come in and get a permit for them and we will allow them up until that date. July 1st is the date I put in here, but again, it could be any date. But any chickens that come up over 40 afterwards would not be allowed. The idea there is to give people the right to enjoy the property that they have, but also trying to mitigate the problem from perpetuating on to the future without any checks. Number six is, is a mix of some administrative changes. And this is number six on page 103. We're, this is just a quality of life thing. We're just going to call them animal, no longer calling them animal permits, calling them livestock permits, just to clarify that not all animals are actually eligible, just livestock for permitting. We clarified further that you don't, you know, in this hypothetical where somebody has 400 non-conforming chickens, you don't need 400 permits. You just need one because the permits cover all of your chickens. Making the police chief responsible for issuing the permits instead of the city clerk, which is what it currently is. And then we added some substantive criteria for when permits are issued. This is mentioned at the beginning of the staff report, but currently it's effectively paying a $25 fee to the city and submitting a completed version of the application for an animal permit, which is included on page 105 of the packet. And if council would indulge me and just turn to page 105, you can see all of the information that we require. And it fits all of it on page 105 because there's not much. Just give us your name, your address, the animals you got and pay your $25 fee. And it doesn't, it doesn't lead to, well, it doesn't lead anywhere really. It's just give us your name and address and the animals that you have and that's about it. And here's your permit. Go ahead and go forth. So that was, as Matthew mentioned, one of several reasons why we are going down this road is to add some substance. And I think in partnership with the police chief, the animal control officer, the codes enforcement officer, the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, the municipal judge, Columbia Gorge Humane Society and the veterinary medical facilities that we, we all consulted this entire time as we were drafting this, I think we came up with some pretty reasonable criteria, but I'm sure, you know, people would have comments on some of them and councillors as well. But let's just go down the list of what the criteria are for whether somebody is eligible for a permit. Again, permits are only available for livestock. Number one is the area where the animals will be kept, where the livestock will be kept. Is it maintained in a sanitary condition and adequately enclosed from other person's property? There's a definition in the ordinance as well for sanitary condition. Number two is the area where the livestock will be kept, not less than 10 feet from a neighboring property that has a structure that people live in. If it is, you don't meet the criteria unless that neighbor agrees in writing to you keeping that livestock. Or is that area where the livestock will be kept, not less than 25 feet from any structure used for human occupancy? If it is, you might not be eligible, at least as drafted, unless the occupant and the owner of that structure agrees in writing to the keeping of livestock. Number three establishes some minimum lot sizes and imposes a numerosity limitation. So as drafted, and these are, these are pulled directly from the LOC model animal ordinance. As drafted, any owner can keep between one and four of any livestock on any lot size. We do not have a minimum lot size. If you have four chickens, you, you can keep your four chickens. Doesn't matter if you live on a 100 foot lot. Not that there are any, but just to sort of illustrate the point. But if you have five chickens, for example, the minimum lot size recommended by LOC is 10,000 square feet. And for every additional chicken that you have over five, LOC recommends an additional 1,000 square feet. Number four, still on page 103, is the area where they will be kept. Does it violate any city zoning laws or land use and development ordinances? So basically this just adds a checkbox for the planning department to weigh in. And finally, number five, do you commit to keep the area where the livestock kept, will be kept open for inspection at reasonable times by the animal control officer for compliance? These are the substantive criteria that are recommended for adoption by all of the people that, and entities that weighed in on this model ordinance before I brought it to council here. Number seven, at the bottom of page 103, we added the police chief's ability to actually revoke permits if they find that the area where the permitted livestock are kept no longer complies with these issuance requirements. Or in any case, if the livestock present an unreasonable risk of danger to persons or property. Wrapping up here on page 104, we added an appeal mechanism to the municipal court for any person who's been aggrieved by any decision. For any person who's been aggrieved by any decision of the city with respect to permits, they can get in front of the municipal judge, have a hearing, and present their evidence. Looking at number nine on page 104, we expanded some of the ways that a public nuisance can arise in the context of animals, including the five that are listed there. Basically, keeping more animals on your premises than is allowed by this chapter. If it's shown that somebody submits evidence that your animal escapes their on-premises confinement quarterly, right? So at least four times in a 12-month period. If the animal that you own is otherwise found on public property. If the animal's owner fails to maintain the premises in a sanitary condition to such a degree that offensive odors that are connected with that animal can be detected from beyond the premises. And finally, if the animal's carcass remains on public property for more than a day from the time that its owner knew or should have known about its location. And finally, number 10, as far as the substantive changes go, we just adjusted some of the penalties and liabilities for violations of chapter. It used to be, or it currently is, $1,250 for each violation. There's a modest increase here to 1,500, unless there's a more specific amount specified elsewhere. Again, I believe that number was last updated in 1996, and so a $250 increase for those kinds of violations. And there's a penalty not exceeding $2,500 for maintaining a prohibited animal, as we define that term. And so before I pass it back to the mayor, I just want to be clear, again, just to sort of remind the council, staff's approach here was to put everything that we've learned over the past year in working with these experts in this field of animals and public health and safety, to put it all on the table, and to very much have a meaningful discussion filled with public engagement. And again, I'm delighted to see this audience filled with people here tonight that are very clearly passionate about animals. And we tried our best to be as, we tried our best to notice as many people as we thought we possibly could. So, sorry if that makes the meeting go a little bit longer, but I think it's one of those things that, you know, we just had to approach head-on and be transparent.
Okay, what I like to do is have the city council go first, but ask questions, and no deliberation. I'm asking that you deliberate after the audience has a chance to participate and to testify. So let's, city council questions first, clarification-type questions, and then we'll open it up to the audience, whoever wants to speak. And we would ask that when I call on you, please come forward to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. And then after we hear from the audience, the council can then deliberate and decide what we want to do from there. So with that, are there any questions for the city manager, or city attorney, or for the rest of our staff that's sitting here tonight? Counsel Runyon?
I'm really most interested in hearing from the audience, but just to start it off, among a few questions, I'll just ask one. It's typical when we review ordinances as we go along through the years, and we've done a number of them, and you've done a fine job. Generally, there's a comparison to other communities. I'm wondering if that's what happened in this particular ordinance, that you looked at some comparable communities and who they were?
Yeah, I have a list of those here. I went, I can go down the list of some of the comparable communities that I, at least I felt they were comparable. Let's starting off with the city of Pendleton. There's, you know, we're comparing entire ordinances, but I thought I'd pick out some of the interesting tidbits. Pendleton only has a ban, it seems, on swine. They are completely banned in the entire city, so no pigs anywhere. They have definitions for livestock, which are very similar to ours, but they don't appear to have any permit system or any sort of prohibition, they just sort of define the term. The city of Madras bans exotic animals, wild animals, and dangerous animals, and they only allow cats, dogs, fish in tanks, non-poisonous reptiles, gerbils, hamsters, mice, squirrels, chipmunks, ferrets, amphibians that are less than one foot long. Livestock, which in their case, they define as cattle, sheep, horses, goats, swine, pigs of any species, mules, and any fur-bearing animals bred and maintained commercially or otherwise within pens, cages, and hutches.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Jonathan.
I'll scooch in and lean into the mic. Is this better?
Yeah.
And fur-bearing animals bred and maintained commercially or otherwise within pens, cages, and hutches. The city of La Grande has banned all swine, peacocks, guinea hens, and roosters. The rest of the city of La Grande's restrictions are based off of the zone district that they're in. And in their residential zones, they allow six rabbits, ducks, or chickens. No roosters in any case. And so again, in their residential zones, they allow six, let's just go with chickens, six chickens. They're allowed for each single-family dwelling in those residential zones if that dwelling lot is 10,000 square feet, and it is a single-family dwelling, and it is adequate, the chicken coop is adequately enclosed, and there's a 20-foot additional setback, so in our case, we have like a 25-foot as I drafted it, and there are some significant sanitation requirements. Livestocks are not permitted with any multifamily uses. There is a provision, though, for livestock that are kept in connection with seasonal 4H purposes and other youth activities. The city of La Grande is really interesting, despite the fact that they're a city, they also have a rural residential zone, where the total number of animals that are allowed on the lot in that zone is limited to the square footage of pasture that's located on that lot, divided by the minimum area. And so for horses, cows, mules, or burrows, you have to have 10,000 square feet of pasture in your rural residential lot. Goat, sheep, or llama, 5,000 square feet, again, in that rural residential lot. And poultry or rabbits, 500 square feet per poultry or rabbit in the rural zone. The city of McMinnville, you can have one horse or cow for each half acre, which is 21,780 square feet over the lot, the lot's minimum lot size for that zone. So in the residential medium zone, there's a lot size, a minimum lot size. And if you're 21,780 square feet over that, you get to keep an extra horse. So one horse for each half acre, one horse or cow, actually. You could also have two sheep or goat, or similarly sized livestock for each half acre over the minimum lot size for the zone district. And no chickens or rabbits are allowed on any lot that is less than 5,000 square feet. The city of McMinnville has also banned all animals other than the ones I just mentioned, and dogs, cats, gerbils, hamsters, non-carnivorous fish, non-venomous reptiles, domestic rabbits, Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs, which are limited to one per residence, domestic fowl or birds, no roosters or peacocks either, and all other livestock are all banned. Two more, the city of Gresham, they have the Gresham Chicken Code, that's the name of their law. And it says that you can have three chickens with a permit on any lot that has a single-family dwelling where that person also resides. And finally, the city of Prinville, the city of Prinville allows one chicken, fowl, or rabbit for every 1,000 square foot of your lot, one horse or cow for every 20,000 square feet, one llama, ostrich, or emu for every 10,000 square feet, and one sheep or goat for every 5,000 square feet. Every other animal that is defined as a domestic animal of the types that are customarily raised or kept on farms for profit or other purposes, and all other livestock are banned, which includes horses, mules, asses, cattle, sheep, swine, goats, llamas, and poultry, including turkeys of any age or sex. And so all of those very specific comparable cities, something that we looked into in addition to what the LOC publishes as their model animal ordinance, which has its own set, which we've incorporated here, too.
Thank you.
You bet.
Not too interested in the Gresham statistics, but I am interested in the Pendleton, Madras, La Grande, and Prinville, they would be more comparable.
You mean the ordinance, the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, as far as comparing, comparing community sizes and whatnot.
Other questions for our staff?
Not questions, but Mayor Mazey, I didn't know what a pot-bellied pig, the difference between a pot-bellied pig and a swine, but it's a Vietnamese pot-bellied pig, and generally they don't exceed 100 pounds. And a swine can grow up to 1,000 pounds, that's the difference between those two.
Any other? Counsel Richardson?
One question for Officer Baker. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. Let's see. The proposed ordinance talks about the types of situations giving rise to a public nuisance, and it says, among the various options, one is, it is shown that an animal escaped, basically, escaped from its premises at least four times in any 12-month period. How hard is it to, I guess what my question in my mind is, that seems like a lot, given that I suspect that by the time it was proven to authorities that a given animal had escaped from a given lot, that was probably, that happened perhaps a number of other times. You have a lot of experience, can you speak to whether that number seems reasonable to you, or if that's actionable for you to follow up on, or if that is something we might need to be thinking about?
Officer, could you introduce yourself for the audience and your position with the city?
I'm the animal control officer for the city, Jake Baker. I've been in this position about three years now, full-time. To answer your question there, council member. So, an incident that I can recall that was more of a struggle for me, there was a pig up on West, no, East 14th Street near Jefferson, it was probably about a 1,000-pound pig.
Hey Jake, can you move the mic a little bit closer?
Yeah, sorry, is that better? Okay, it was about a 1,000-pound pig.
In city limits?
In city limits. The pig decided to go down across the street to its neighbor's house and eat apples off the ground. But due to the stature of the pig and me having the previous animal truck, which was a small Ford Ranger, I couldn't fit the pig in the back of my vehicle. So I had to herd the pig back to its property, unknowing which property it belonged to. Just took an educated guess and followed the pig back to its house. But in those kind of situations, anything usually bigger over a goat, I would say, is very hard for me to find a mode of transportation and detainment for the animal. Yeah. And so for that, those animals, very hard to control. Catchpools only work for about goats, I would say. I can, please. Oh, okay. So with that, when these animals get out repeatedly, I would say either, yeah, two or four times would probably be the best, but four times does sound reasonable, because with that, I mean, we can get to the point where we revoke the animal permit.
And I think one of the calculations with the four times was once a quarter, basically, but again, a starting point for discussion.
I feel like at some point, you just should be like, okay, we get it, that's a problem, we need to be able to resolve this. And once a quarter for, you know, five-pound fluffy might not be that big a deal, but some animals need to be returned and pinned up properly, like, the first time. So that's, that'd be an area I think we might want to think about a little bit.
Other questions? Counsel Runyon?
If somebody else has one, I'll keep dumping them in. We're changing, for those who already have animals that require a permit, we're changing it to an annual fee from, how often was the permit for previously?
It was a one-time payment of $25.
And what's the reason for increasing it? Is there a lot of maintenance on watching that annual permit, or what?
I think it made sense to have a one-time $25 fee when there was nothing really for the city to do, other than to process the payment of that fee and give you your animal permit. Your name got put onto an Excel sheet that's been sort of carried over for the last 20 years. We sent out a mailer to all the different animal permit holders, and, you know, giving them notice of this meeting, and we based it off of this old spreadsheet. And that was it. So it made sense to have a one-time payment, especially if the city wasn't doing any follow-up and not checking to see if the animals were being taken care of correctly, and whether there was any nuisance concerns with the neighbors. But I think under this new ordinance, there's a bit more administration that goes into it, especially considering that the police chief, if adopted as drafted, would have the authority to revoke permits. There's, there appears to be some opportunities for follow-up. All in all, there's some more administration of the ordinance that, you know, sort of supports an annual fee. But again, that was sort of the, that's at least my impression for why we went down that road. It seems pretty common. But I'll defer to the city manager, or the police chief, or codes, or staff, if you guys can come up with other reasons to justify an annual permit payment. I think council would just be interested in learning more about the process.
Did you see that kind of an increase annually with the other communities you looked at?
I don't believe it hasn't. Well, there's no fee proposed in the ordinance, the fee would be set by council for the fee schedule, but I think nearly all of the communities that we looked at that have an annual permit have an annual fee for that permit. Yeah.
I think one of the, I think one of the changes was a one-time permit, and what you're, what you're touching upon, if I may, is a one-time permit for, for an animal, and it would be $25 for that animal's lifetime.
Could you get closer to the microphone, please?
For that, the lifetime of that animal, right? A one-time permit for the animal's life. But when we were looking at the spreadsheet that detailed the permits that had been taken out, it was woefully inaccurate and out of date. And so if we have a one-time permit for the lifetime of a particular animal, we're never informed of when an animal deceased is deceased, or dies, or is removed from the city. And so again, looking at some of the other ordinances and wanting to be able to provide this update, and provide these, this review of the permits that we have, an annual process was identified. But again, up for council discussion.
Yeah, okay. And I'm sorry, the reason I asked for them closer to the microphone, you have speakers out there, we don't. And sometimes it's when they get back, it's just a little hard to hear at the end of the bench here. So going from a one-time to a different repetition for fees, that's when the review would happen, I would assume. If you're going to charge them every year, you're going to do review every year? Do you want to do that? Or is it, should it be every, this is one of the things I want to discuss at the end, after we hear from the citizens where those would apply, you know, should it be biannually or every three or four years, something? Do we want to get into a whole thing of going out and, you know, reviewing each one of these properties separately from all the other duties that staff have to do?
I think, I think it's very common to have an annual fee. I also think that it doesn't, doesn't need to be an annual fee, as Matthew mentioned. In fact, for the proposed dog control ordinance, which again, we'll bring later this spring, I think we've battered around the idea of a permit every three years, or I'm sorry, a dog license every three years. And we could certainly explore that here, maybe once every five years even, depending on the nature of the, you know.
Dogs are maybe a different area, but that's one of the areas I want to, on the larger animals and whatnot, I would like to discuss it at a later point, you know, maybe if we're not really doing anything but just collecting more money, that's not really fair, in my opinion, but, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just respond to that last point? I don't think there's a world where the city, if we adopt this ordinance, as I drafted it at least, is just collecting money. I think that some of the more involved processes of the police chief, and the planning department, and the animal control division, and the codes enforcement division, as well as all the different times that the city attorney's office gets called in to weigh in on these matters, I think more than sufficiently justifies the need for a fee to compensate the city for the administration of the ordinance, at least as it's drafted. But yeah, if the ordinance were to proceed as it currently is drafted, yeah, you're right, we would just be collecting money and not doing anything.
Yeah.
Yep.
My point exactly.
Anything else, Counselor Runyon?
Well, probably, but somebody else may have a question.
No, I'm fine.
I got, well, go ahead.
Well, not a question so much, and I think it'll be pretty evident as the evening goes on. We are still an agricultural rural community, you know, and so you're going to have people within our city limits that have had horses, maybe goats. have people within our city limits that have had horses, maybe goats, you know, whatever, and they were well-approved in the past. And if they're not meeting certain laws or whatnot for as a nuisance and so forth, I get it. But if they are conducting themselves presently as, you know, they've done as good citizens through all these years, just having a real hard time with making some huge changes here. And I don't know how many of us have granddaughters here at the council, but if I had a horse or two, and the one that my 10-year-old granddaughter loved was an older horse and fell over one day, and I can't replace it according to this new ordinance, boy, that would be life-changing for me, right there. So just a thought, maybe out of the box a little bit, but that's the age group I'm in. Okay.
Okay, questions for the staff before we?
So replacing was my other question. That'll be on my list when we go to deliberation.
Okay, the question I have is goats and horses are considered prohibited animals, and of course, there's a, you know, grandfathering of sorts. I don't see, I miss alpacas, or would that be considered a prohibited animal? Because I don't see it listed anywhere.
How big is an alpaca?
Small horse. Is that all? 150 pounds?
Bigger than a goat, smaller than a horse.
It's bigger than a goat, smaller than a horse. I think, I mean, I think that that would fall into those, you know, one of those exceptions that we would leave it to the police chief to make the call on, on a case-by-case basis. There's a whole list, you know, it's nearly impossible to list everything, right? And so we have some discretion built into the ordinance, to the chief of police, who I think we all trust to make the right call as, based off the information in front of them, on a case-by-case basis. And so, and again, if anybody has any sort of grievance associated with that decision from the chief of police, or really any decision of the city under this ordinance, there's also that additional check of having the opportunity to take it to the municipal judge for a hearing, and having the opportunity to present evidence as well. And so, that's a great question. And, yeah.
Well, that's, alpacas, we're just gonna have to get that inserted into one of these categories, because I do know there's alpacas within the city limits. Of the six communities that you listed there, and you went through it real quick, so I didn't get a chance to tabulate, how many of the six communities list horses and goats as what you would consider a prohibited animal?
You said horses and goats, or horses or goats?
I mentioned those two, because to me, they're the only two that, in the category that I see around town.
Well, horses and goats are allowed in the city of La Grande, but only in the rural residential and this other developmental zone. So that it's functionally prohibited elsewhere, everywhere else in the city, except for the special rural zone. So the city of La Grande is one city that prohibits them. The city of McMinnville allows horses and goats, but only if the parcel that they're on is half an acre, which is 21,780 square feet, over the minimum lot size for the zone district that they're in. And so I don't know in the context of the city of La Grande, of McMinnville, what that realistically means. I do know that while they are technically allowed, it seems to be quite a burden in order to have that. They appear to be banned in the city of Gresham, for what it's worth. I know that Counselor Runyon mentioned, it's not a great comparable. Frankly, it's not a great comparable, but it is a comparable. And the city of Prinville, again, allows one horse, for every 20,000-square-foot lot, or every 20,000-square-feet allows somebody to have one horse, and every 5,000-square-feet allows one goat.
And Pendleton and Madras?
Pendleton, the only banned animal are all swine. And in Madras... Madras allows, they appear to allow horses and goats.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
A gentleman named Austin Drewitt wrote a letter to the city. I'll just ask the questions that he's asking. I think it's been answered, but I want to make sure it's on the record. Are current owners expected to call, sell, give away livestock that were previously considered okay? Or will there be an exception for current permit holders?
There's no expectation that anybody who currently owns an animal that would otherwise be prohibited, would have to do anything other than to get your permit before the date that council sets in the ordinance. If you get your permit, you're good to go.
Okay.
But if one of the animals were to pass away, then you couldn't replace it?
Yeah, I think that's sort of the point of non-conforming. It's an attempt to get to the, you know, conformity over time. Yeah.
Okay, last call for questions before we turn it over to the audience. Anybody in the audience, if would like to come forward and either ask questions or give us your comments, please raise your hand. Okay, in the back, come on up.
Just for information, we've heard both acreage, and we've heard feet. One acre is equal to 43,560 square feet. That helps any?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you great.
My name is Kyle Van Cleve, 813 East 12th Street here in the Dells. And just a question for the city attorney and the city manager, why wasn't Hood River included in the comparables? I know a lot of people view Hood River as mostly the, you know, the below the heights area, but it's a pretty comparable agricultural community above that. So, it's just curious.
That's a great question. I was on the phone with the city attorney for the city of Hood River today for about 25 minutes, going over that very exact question that you asked. The city of Hood River has an interesting arrangement that they have, that they share with the county of Hood River. And the city of Hood River doesn't have any dog control or animal control whatsoever. They have an intergovernmental agreement with the county. And so, and the way that state law operates is if a city doesn't have any of those laws on the book, well, the county's laws apply in that city limits, which is pretty rare. But they happen to be one of the rare communities in the city, in the state of Oregon, that appears to have that sort of arrangement. In the rest of the conversation, we talked about some of the challenges that they're facing with dealing with dogs primarily, but animals generally as well. So I don't know if they're making any changes. He didn't mention that they are trying to explore that, but you're right, it is a very comparable community in a number of ways, especially considering its proximity. They just, they haven't had a chance to explore that fully yet. Yeah, you bet.
We did have some people sign up. That list was just given to me. Two of the people are on Zoom, so Mr. Reichelderfer, or Ron, excuse me, Wagaman. Caleb Wagaman, we'll get to you on Zoom later. So why don't you like to come forward, please, and... Well, why don't you, you could start off by talking into the microphone and enter?
Do I have to start over?
Yes.
Debbie Ritzelderfer, 924 East 19th Street in the Dells. And I'm one of those fortunate people that have property that's in the national scenic area and also in the city limits. The property is zoned rural residential, which allows livestock. But I have to comply with the city regulations, even though the zoning allows it. So that's one of the things that I would like to see you exempt, is all property that ended up, that is zoned are our one, and ended up in the city limits. Exempt and/or grandfather those properties in, and don't apply these regulations. So I wrote something, and I'm probably just gonna have to read it, because I get into the weeds really bad. So, my first thought was, oh my, dozens of interdepartmental meetings by the city manager's office, city attorney's office, police department, in collaboration with the Oregon Department of Justice's Senior Assistant Attorney General for Animal Abuse and Special Counsel, having specialized expertise in dog and animal matters. That is, that's over the top. It ain't broke, don't fix it. These laws have been in place in this city since 1996. Ghosts, chickens, and people haven't changed in the last 30 years. What you're describing in these ordinances, I'm hearing, is over-restrictive, is over-the-top from Pendleton and many of the other cities. And I feel like you're making more work for our city police officers, which I think have their hands full. Is it going to reduce the budget for your code enforcement, and then increase the city police department budget for them to deal with this? This administratively is a burden I wouldn't wish on our police chief. I'm sorry. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's relevant. I don't think it's worth $25 a year to make people jump through hoops to have animals. And then when it, the part in your report that asks about or addresses the cost, well, there is no cost, because this is just a proposal. Hell, yeah, there are some costs. You've already spent dozens of interdepartmental meetings. So you have costs already that you have spent our taxpayer dollars on, trying to sort all this out. You spent 20 minutes with the city of Hood River. I get to pay for your time to do that. It's like you're looking for a problem that doesn't exist. If it's not broke, don't fix it. It felt like when I read it, that you were looking for something to make administrative improvements, improvements. Who determines whether it's an improvement or a detriment to your taxpayers? You're looking for enhancement. Who defines enhancement? You guys get to sit here, do any of you have horses, or cows, or livestock? Like, have you grown up around that? Do your kids go to far age because of mine did? So... The Dells is a rural community, and I think Rod addressed that. Definition of rural is countryside pastoral agricultural farming. Driving down 10th Street, I enjoy seeing horses in a pasture on one side of the street, and deer on the other side. In the city limits, I've seen foxes playing with a puppy, and stopped while raccoons waddled across the road. That's part of why the Dells, why I love the Dells. It's that. If I didn't want that, I could move to Gresham or Hillsborough, but that's what I want. Wasco County has 24,000 square miles. Only 6.6 of those square miles are in the city of the Dells. So we're taking this over-the-top approach to a part of Wasco County that's 0.275% of our county. And we're using police resources to do it. The rest of the 23,993 acres in Wasco County are, guess what, rural agriculture, horses, cows, sheep, orchards. Like, that's what our community is. And it feels to me like some of the people behind your podium are rural-minded, aren't, don't have that gut feeling and the love. So I chose, dang, I chose to raise my children in the rural setting of Wasco County. They in turn raised horses, deers, pigs, goats, ducks, and chickens. They watched mares foal, goats give birth, and eggs hatch. From this lifestyle, they learned that living things need food, water, and shelter to survive. They learned how to work hard, how to be responsible for beings other than themselves, to be entrepreneurs, to love the outdoors, and that food doesn't just show up on the grocery shelves. I have a daughter who lived eight years in London, and now lives in midtown Manhattan, and she's been there five years. She grew up with this lifestyle, and the skill, the life skills that she learned, dealing with animals and loving animals, is what helped her survive and thrive in huge cities, and be independent, and be successful. And so I think that I didn't hear anything in any of this that addresses the benefit that the livestock in our community gives to the kids, to me, when I drive down the street and see them. And I know, not everybody grew up in the country, not everybody loves those things. I don't think we need new or more rules and regulations. We just need to be good neighbors and good stewards of our animals. The livestock issue cannot be addressed with a one-size-fits-all solution. My home is adjacent to hundreds of acres of orchard, is perfect for the chickens and goats my neighbors have. My neighbors that play loud music and their dogs barking are more of a nuisance to me than the goats and chickens. I look off my deck and I see the goats playing, and I hear the chickens laying eggs, and it warms my heart. It makes me smile. And I don't think it's fair to take that away, and I don't think it's reasonable, and I don't think it respects our rural agricultural community. So I was gonna end by just saying, grandfathering the properties that are zoned rural residential, that can't subdivide, that livestock is a permitted use. Just exempt them. And then, the chart that I read, said that you could have five chickens on 1,000 acres, or 1,000 square feet. If you have more than that, you can have five. Well, there's a huge difference on 10,000 square, you need 10,000 square feet for five chickens. There's a huge difference between five chickens on 10,000 square feet, and five horses on 10,000 square feet. And when I looked up the definition of livestock, it specifically said that chickens and ducks and geese and turkeys are poultry. They are not livestock. So I don't know how you can lump chickens in with livestock. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Kruger.
Still on. Julie Kruger, 911 East 10th Street. Hi.
Welcome home.
It's time I've been back in this room for a while. I want to thank staff, first of all, for sending out that notice. I know I'm working on 13 years as a chicken keeper, so I was pleased that I was still on the list. I appreciate all the comments that Debbie Ritzelderfer made, and so I'll try to not comment on all of those things again. But I do agree, in our community, and I know I have several people in my larger neighborhood who keep chickens too, the permit system we have, I still have my permit taped to my little bulletin board in my kitchen. I've never had a nuisance complaint against me. I think the ordinance works for small animals like I have. I can't speak to goats and horses, because I just have chickens, and two ancient ducks that I wish I didn't have. But what I will say, I think, gosh, Debbie, she touched on so many great points. So I'm just gonna stick with chicken keeping, because whoever you worked with weren't chicken keepers. First of all, you can never have one chicken, because chickens are social, and they're meant to live in flocks. So for instance, right now, I have six chickens. Two of them lay eggs, the other four are retired on the job. And so for me, and I assume other chicken keepers who live in town, I could have up to a dozen chickens at a time, because I'm not gonna kill my old chickens. They just live quietly and peck around, and they don't do anything. Since roosters are not allowed in the city limits anymore, I think that has, I assume, maybe Nikki can confirm, reduced a lot of the issues that people were complaining about noise and nuisances, because they're very loud. Chickens spend about one minute after they lay their eggs, singing their little song, and then they're done with you for the day. They're quiet, and they're very enjoyable for being in your garden. They help with insect control. So, I mean, I'm already over the limit on a 7,500-square-foot lot. I don't think you need to put limits in, because I think the ordinance we have currently speaks to the fact that if it's a nuisance, somebody's gonna rat you out, and it's gonna be your neighbor next door. My neighbors love my chickens so much that when their daughter was little, they put a ladder up against the fence so she could climb it and watch them all day. So, you know, I just think, I agree with Debbie Ritzelderfer that I think you're putting a lot of administrative rules in place that aren't necessary, particularly for the poultry. I'm not gonna speak to the big animals, because I have no experience with that. Thank you. Oh, wait, there was one other thing. Nope. You covered it all. Nope. You covered it all. Good job, Debbie. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Chuck Covert.
You all know how much I hate to get up here and start talking, don't you? I think I know all, everyone here except Council Rando. I don't know that we've ever met or had a conversation, but we'll, we need to do that. The rest of you here, I'm Chuck Covert, 3819 Columbia View. Oh, you want me to use this? Thank you. I'm Chuck Covert from Columbia, or 3819 Columbia View Drive. I'm here with my wife Kathy, and it's her horses is, is why I'm up here speaking. We've lived here since 1989. We're fortunate enough to have some acreage that happens to be in the city limits. I think we were annexed in just before we bought the property. We live on the very east side of town on Columbia View Drive. And most of you are familiar where, where our place is. And, and we've had two horses for 20 some years now. And I guess almost all the neighbors from Columbia View Heights come up and visit with the horses. And the kids love to come up and feed them. And it would be, it's not something that we would like to see have happen. But the only thing I have to say about the large animal ordinances is that you've put in prohibiting horses, or it's possible that you're considering doing it. And I'm here to ask you to reconsider that. And the other thing that with our property, we have 11 acres. And 20 years ago, we built a facility to keep horses. We have a relatively large barn with four stalls in it, feed room, tack room. And we have fencing that we put around the entire 11 acres. It was a little expensive to do that, but we did it because we wanted to have pets. And horses are pets. They're nothing more than big puppy dogs, in our opinion. And if we would have to discontinue being able to have our property be for equestrian use, that, I don't know what we would do with all that facility that we had put there. But the only other thing I might add is that I looked through the, the ordinance here, and, and I do agree with some things that you've talked about. And one is that I hate to see an animal confined to a small space. And whether it be a chicken, a whatever, a goat, a horse, I think that they need to have a space. And when I read or heard Jonathan talking that some of them have the requirements for a half acre for a horse, I think that's probably a good, a good thing to have. The other thing that I was just noticing that I just wanted to comment on is that on your requirements on fence lines, it says that it has to be 10 feet. And I guess as long as you have agreeance from your neighbors that they are not opposed to, it's not an issue. But if they did have a problem with it, it means you'd have to have two fences. You'd have to have your property line fence, and then you'd have to have a fence back farther to whatever meets the requirement here. And that's something I think that maybe we ought to reconsider or think about. And it depends on what we're talking about. Chickens and horses aren't, it's not apples, it's apples and oranges. And so if we were talking cattle, some, you know, goats, somebody told us we need to have a goat to keep one of our horses company. Well, goats are hard to keep inside. Horses are pretty easy. If you put a fence up, and it doesn't take a lot of fence, because as long as they have grass and something to eat, you know, they're happy. They're not gonna leave. The only thing that'll, I guess, entice a horse to wanna leave the field is when somebody leaves the gate open and asks me how I know that. So anyway, I have learned not to leave the gate open. And, and when that has happened, we've always had somebody call us and say, and most of the time when it's happened, we've always been out of town. But the person would call and say, they got a phone call, and it happened to be at the auction yard because they have animals up there. And so we've been fortunate that, that we've had people help us when I screw up. So with that, I think I've covered everything. I was just curious, how many large animal permits do you have? Is there a large number of?
Yeah. So that's a great question, Mr. Mayor. Can I just?
Sure.
Your name was on the list. That's why you got a letter, right?
Yeah, sure.
I heard you lost the letter too, though.
Who'd you hear that from? Boy, it, I can't screw up without everybody finding out.
Now it's on the internet forever.
It was probably Council McGlothlin.
And I appreciate how quickly I received it after I made the phone call. So, thank you.
Your name was on the list. You still have alpacas?
No.
How long ago did those, did you get rid of those alpacas?
I've never had alpacas.
You never did?
No, we've only had horses and dogs. Oh, okay.
Got it. Well.
They should be in this ordinance.
Funny, it's funny because I think on the list that I have, which is the tracker, and I wish I brought it with me, honestly, I didn't think to do that tonight, but I can send it out if you want. But I think you, maybe you don't have alpacas. The point is, is that the list is so not accurate. It has, it has listings on there. You've had your permit since the 90s.
Yes.
I think that's probably when this tracker was started. And I, I think it's just shifted hands too many times. It's not accurate at all. And, and because the fact that there is no renewal for the permit, well, once you get the permit, that's pretty much the rest of the story, right?
Correct.
And so all the data that we have, if it's accurate, it was only accurate the day that the permit was issued. And, and your name is on there from the 90s. I remember that. And so it's whatever happened in the 90s is whatever happened on that list today. So because the city doesn't have a way to, I mean, I'm not, you know, advocating for annual. I think it makes more sense to do every five years or three years, whatever. But there has to be some sort of check on that. So I don't have an answer.
Okay.
I can send it out.
Well, no, I was just curious because my next question was, you know, how many issues have you had with large animals? Or have you, have you revoked any animal applications due to someone not being compliant? Has that been an issue?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Uh, under the current, under the current code.
I believe, Nikki, our code enforcement officer might have an answer to that question if you will indulge.
I know, I know she had problems with a monkey down on our property.
That's an old story. Don't, we're live. We did actually recently, within the last six months, had a horse that someone wanted in our residential area, pretty much right in the middle of, of town. They wanted the horse in the backyard, which definitely wasn't enough room. And all neighbors were complaining about that. So there was that horse. I think that was the only one recently.
Is that, so I'm, I guess I'm asking for the first time. Was that a permit that was issued that we revoked? Or was that a permit application that was denied?
That was a, a permit application that was denied.
Denied.
So it wasn't revoked?
No.
Correct.
Okay. So, so under the current code, just for everybody, Chuck in the audience and the council, under the current code, the only way for the city to revoke your permit is if over 50% of the total number of the owners and the residents of the property that are abutting your premises are kept, if they sign and file a petition with the city clerk that requests the revocation. So half of your neighbors have to send us a letter. Or if you're keeping the animal in such a way that you're creating a public nuisance, disturbing the neighborhood, or your neighbors enjoyment of their property.
Well, fortunately.
The two ways to do it.
Fortunately, the lot that we have the horses on, we own both pieces of property on each side of that. We have two acres on each side of the seven acres that the horses run on. So we have pretty good control over those two neighbors. But we're just fortunate that we have that type of situation. So, and I guess as far as I see vegetation management, I guess I could keep the horses and move them around to keep the pasture mode because that's really the reason we have the horses today. We don't ride the two that we have because they're not usable for that. But it's like juleen or chickens. What do you do with them when they quit laying eggs? You keep them. I mean, they're pets. And so we'll have those horses till they decide to take a long nap. And other than that, I think I'll say thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. It's good to see you all. And Council Rando, I'll try to get together with you here and visit. So anybody have any questions of me?
Council Runyon? You mentioned you were out there before the city annexed your land. So how do, how do you feel about that? And, and what might happen to the future folks that get annexed in and all of a sudden have to eliminate what they have on their property?
Well, when, when we bought the property, it had been annexed. But our neighbor had fought that. Mr. Alfred was his name. And his piece of property was excluded. Well, that property now has been included into the, or in, or in the city limits, and it's under being developed. But, you know, the one question that I have that if we decide that we are not going to allow large animals, that what would it take for me not to be in the city limits anymore? And I don't know. Can anybody answer that? What does it take to do that?
I, I'd go on a limb to say, you and I can touch base on that. It's probably more complicated answer than just this.
Do you really want to go out on a limb with me on that?
I dare, I dare so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just respond back to a question that, I guess, a point that Ms. Kruger had made earlier. I just thought it'd be important for the council to realize that the restrictions that are, as the ordinance is currently drafted, they apply to adult animals, which we define as, I guess, in the context of chickens, or at least I would define it if this goes further, as chickens over the age of six months. And so you mentioned, you mentioned something relevant to that. So I just wanted to mention that. What's that? Now, Ms. Kruger said that it's not quite right. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. The chickens don't start laying until they're six months old. But chickens really are only productive egg layers for two years. And then the third year, they lay a few, and then they're done. So what I'm saying to the council is, I have six chickens. Two of them lay eggs, and the other four sit around and be retired because they're old. But I'm not gonna go kill my nine-year-old chicken because I have too many chickens on my property.
So you have?
So if I want to, no, I have six.
Six.
Two of them lay eggs, four of them do not because they're old. So if I want to have enough eggs to feed my husband and myself, I should probably go get three more chickens so that next year they'll be laying eggs. But then I'll have nine chickens, which is perfectly fine on my property as far as fit. I have a nice sized coop. I have a run. They can have the garden. They have, they're not in any, they're, they live in a Taj Mahal. But, but that would violate the new ordinance as proposed because
Right.
my lot size would only allow me to have four.
Right.
And I'm, I'm trying to explain, I mean, chicken math. So like every two years or so, you need to get two or three more chickens. If you wanna get them for the eggs, which is the main reason we have them.
I see. Is that the main reason, in your opinion, most people have chickens?
Most people have chickens?
Yeah, the most people that have chickens, are they mostly because they want them for the eggs?
I think so. I guess I haven't surveyed people. I see them quite a lot of places right in town.
Didn't talk to chicken coop people, so I thought, I'm talking to a coop person. I might as well ask.
That's why I originally did it, was for the eggs.
Okay.
And I used to share them with people that I worked with, but now I don't get enough eggs. So.
Well, that's a good point. And so, you know.
And so it's just a, you know, I, I feel like people who live in town who are raising chickens, they're, they're safe, number one, because they're an isolated flock. So you don't have a lot of worry about bird flu or anything like that. But you, you need to be able to have more than four chickens. If I only had four chickens right now, I'd get zero eggs. But I'm not gonna go out and kill my chickens. And I don't think most people would that don't raise them for eggs and meat. Yeah. I don't think you could eat one of my old chickens. I think they'd be too tough.
Agreed. Okay, we have one more speaker at least signed up, and that was, he's on Zoom. That's Caleb Wageman, Wegman? Are you, you have to unmute him, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
We can hear you fine. Go ahead.
Hi.
Could you again, give us your address, please?
Yes, I live at 842 Cascade Court, West the Dalles.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted to speak tonight on this, just because basically kind of what this means to me, and I feel like for a lot of different people out there here in the Dalles, I definitely agree with everyone else that's spoken, that our town is a rural town. It's been that way since pretty much its foundation. And to be able to put these ordinances in, I feel like very much puts us toward, heading towards Gresham, which we're not. We're not Gresham. We're not a big city. We're a small town that thrives on small town things. I mean, our cherry fest is one of the biggest things around, and we have that because of the cherry orchards that are around us. You know, and for myself, I have chickens, goats, ducks, I have a goose, and I got turkeys. With this new ordinance, yes, I'd be able to have them currently grandfathered in, but I want to be able to keep having more of them as they either pass on, or as previously mentioned, you know, if one stops laying, I'm not able to replace that and be able to continue to have eggs, you know. And the big thing for me, and I feel like others are this way as well, you gotta raise our kids with it, you know? You gotta bring that lifestyle to them of raising animals. I can't afford to go move out of city limits and buy property to do this. I have to use what I have here. And this would take away the experience of my children, being able to grow up with this special thing, you know? And I feel like the, that this ordinance was specifically looked at to target these, these kinds of things and to remove them from the city, very specifically to, like I said before, make us look more like Gresham. The property sizes and everything like that, where you have to have everything, unless you're looking at half acre or more, you're not able to really follow these distances unless you get signatures all the time, you know? And it's not like I'm disagreeing with the entire thing that's being put here. I actually sat down and read through this multiple times, because I am very concerned about it. I definitely agree with the cleanliness and everything and the nuisance of it. But as some others people spoke, I have had more issues with dogs running around in my neighborhood that are currently, we have called animal control and not had taken care of, than people have had issue with my animals that I keep on my property, you know? In fact, you know, like some of the individuals speaking here tonight said, that brings a smile to their face. There are so many people that walk by my property and actually purposely choose a route to walk by to see and greet all my animals every single day. I can't tell you how many people walk by with their young kids, getting to interact with my goats and my chickens, say hi, you know? How educational is that for them? And how much of a benefit and life does that bring to the community? We aren't a suburban town. We shouldn't head that direction. That's not a good direction for us to go. You know, and one of the things that I thought was very interesting in this whole proposal with this, you know, we put rabbits as a livestock item. So everyone in the city that just owns a singular pet rabbit will now have to get an annual or biannual or every five year permit for just owning a singular pet rabbit in their house that doesn't cause an issue to anybody. But yet we can allow a thousand pound pot-bellied pig here in town that gets loose, as the animal control officer says. I personally know that this pig is a pot-bellied pig because my wife has worked for a veterinary clinic and has done calls for that animal. There's multiple pot-bellied pigs here in town that are over 300 pounds. But yet a rabbit, something that is small and takes up no space, is gonna be required to have a permit. And you can't have over four unless you have the city come and do an inspection. That seems very out of spec and out of scope about really what kind of animals and what kind of things should be going on here. I'm sorry if I sound a little bit attacking, but obviously this is kind of a personal thing for me. And I'm not meaning to come across that way. I don't normally public speak. So I apologize for that. And, you know, not advanced, but kind of after the fact. So thank you for, for listening. And that's about all that I had to say.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? Last call? Yes, sir. Come on forward. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jesse Trossper. I live on 1112 Blitely Drive, the Dallas, Oregon. Now, one of the things, I'm a chicken keeper myself, but not only do I raise eggs, I also raise meat birds. Now, you're talking about your list of keeping track of animals. To raise meat birds, you're looking at six to eight weeks before harvest. So, I mean, and for me to have enough chickens to raise to keep for myself, to make it reasonable, I need to look at like 20 or 30 meat birds, just in that. So with the limitations of that, now you're saying that I can't raise that many chickens that are there for six weeks, eight weeks? If I go with a different breed, 10 to 12?
That's what the current, yeah.
Right. And that, and that's what I'm saying. And we should stick. Right. And that's what I'm saying. And we should stick with, especially for the smaller animals, stick with what the current ordinance is.
Okay. Appreciate your input. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everybody hear me? My name is Stephanie Van Cleve. I live at nine thirty East Nineteenth Street. I'm Debbie's neighbor. And unlike most of the animal owners here, my goats and chickens are not permitted. And that was because I did not realize I needed to. It was not until I received a letter to the previous owner, who is now deceased, that I realized that I probably needed a permit because he had been permitting his chickens and horses previously. When I bought my property seven, eight years ago, I bought it as a horse property. Wonderful horse property, close to town, right next to Dry Hollow. It was perfect for my small family. We've had goats, we've had chickens. And every single day, the kids that walk home into Dry Hollow, they always go and they stop and talk to our goats. They chase our chickens back in if somebody's gotten out. We live in an agricultural area. I could toss an apple and it would reach the cherry orchards because Dry Hollow is my street in front of my house. So as you know, if you've driven out that way, Dry Hollow is the city limit line. I did not realize that I was unfortunately on the wrong side of that line when I first bought my house. So yes, I have some permitting to do. And it's just unfortunate with this new ordinance that if any of my goats die or my chickens die, I will not be able to replace them. And then if I were to ever want to sell my home, I could not sell it as a horse property. So I've got a whole acre of unusable property that's slightly unmanageable because it's on a hill. And the only way we're able to manage that vegetation is through goats. So it would be very difficult for us to sell at the same value that we paid for it and that we were hoping to invest in as a one acre property that does, that can do nothing essentially. And I want to say, I think everybody has said something that I totally agree with. There were a lot of things in the ordinance that I don't agree with. But I also do agree that there needs to be some limitations and some restrictions held within the city. But I think there are a lot of properties that really don't fall into that category and that the ordinance should have exemptions for different types of properties. I don't know exactly what that looks like, if there are residential rural zoning. I'm not even sure what mine is. I've got a lot of education to do on my own property now. But I think there should be some exemptions for how close you are to the city law, limit line.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, City Council is, we can now deliberate. What do you guys want to do?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
I'm sorry, yeah, our city manager had something to add.
I just have a very brief comment, you know? I, I think, you know, all too often we, we lack or we see the lack of civil discourse in some of our institutions around the country. And I just want to take a moment to thank everybody for their comments this evening and how civil and productive it was. I think one of the intents here, you know, this ordinance came about for a variety of reasons, like I mentioned at the start of the staff report. And I think this is the, exactly the intent of having this as a discussion item tonight is to get this kind of feedback to help this community inform the city council of the opinions and input that you have and setting these ordinances that we control over ourselves. And so I just wanted to make that comment that I really appreciate everybody here this evening and for the, the tone and tenor of everybody's comments.
I agree with Mr. Cleve a percent. Thank you all very much. Okay. Counselor McLaughlin, you got something you want to?
Amen on? We are, it is our purpose at City Council to review and to take in all of the consideration that you've given to us and then make decisions in the best interest of our community. We want to make sure that our city's safe. And we want to make sure that not everyone follows the law and not everyone does all of the things that you are all doing to be responsible citizens. Generally, rules and regulations are made to address those people like a thousand pound pig getting out four times in the middle of, that's unreasonable. And we should not have that, but we have to have rules and regulations to address that, to make it fair. So what I'm saying is, I, and I, I don't know if I speak for everyone else, but we take your persuasive comments in consideration when coming back. And I will assure you that we will address as many things as reasonably that you expect of us in addressing some of the concerns that we've heard tonight. We don't want to be, we don't want to over-regulate. We don't want to become Gresham. We want to remain the Dals. And we're going to do everything we can in our power to do that.
Yeah, I'd also point out that while Gresham was surveyed in McMinnville, I would not consider them rural communities. We did, for the six communities that were surveyed, I would consider rural communities. Anybody else? Counselor Ryan?
Yeah, just thinking about what Mrs. Rachel Durfer was talking about and the comments I made earlier. I grew up in the Dals and stayed at my grandfather's house from the time I could walk until I could go to school while my parents worked. And he had a chicken coop and that was at 10th and Kelly Avenue, Catty Corner for Spencer, Libby and Powell. And was there for many years after they were gone and the house was sold and whatnot. And I always miss that house, but I know walking out to that chicken coop with my grandfather every day was a big deal. And lots of lessons are learned along, along the way because of those interactions with the animals as well as with a loved relative. So I, I just really kind of feel we're doing a whole big deal about nothing, as you mentioned. There's, there's some little things maybe in there that was state law has to tweak a rule here or there. But all of a sudden we're making these big changes where there really haven't been very many complaints over the years about these people that have chickens and so forth, or horses. And for that matter, it might be a mule or a donkey, okay? So we shouldn't just malign horses for causing the problem. So I, I don't know, that's, I can see updating the fee if it's necessary for administrative costs. I have questions whether it is or not. If we're going to change it to, you know, a period, a year or bi-annual or whatever it happened to be, then we can look at that. But otherwise, if it isn't broke, we don't have to fix it. And I just, I have a picture on my phone here of me holding a two-year-old alligator about a week ago. I'm glad to see alligators are on the list of prohibited animals. He had duct, he had duct tape around his mouth, but.
That man.
Nikki was taking notes of addresses over. Don't do that. Not in my meeting.
Move on. I, I too would like to thank all of your stories and input because it does make a difference.
Okay, anybody else? Counsel Richardson?
Thanks. Just a few comments. First of all, thank you, Mr. Wagner and Ms. Rachel Durfer and others for speaking in public. I know that can be a scary thing. You did a good job. It helps us in our deliberations. I also want to say I appreciate staff because one way we have substantial conversations is the staff says, hey, let's take a look at this and see if there's something we need to update. So I appreciate it. And while it's true that often if something is not broke, you shouldn't fix it, it's worth looking at things. We've run into a couple of issues in the last year or two where we did not look at updating rules and, and, and guidelines and such on things like SRTs and even our water rates where we kind of just let them go for a long time without being unexamined. So I do think it's worth taking a look at things. Jake, question for you, just very rough ballpark. If you were to give a percentage of the, of your calls that were large animals, chickens and dogs, what would the, the rough percentage of your calls that are large animals be?
So the code enforcement officer does chickens.
Okay.
But for larger animals, I'd say a very low percentage.
Yep. How about for dogs?
Majority of my.
Majority of your calls? Do you want to swing in there, Nikki? What kind of, what's the volume of chicken complaints we're getting?
Mostly chickens are when there's a rooster involved for noise. But often I would say that, you know, there's, there's a rhythm throughout the year, mostly in the summertime of the smell that if they're not picking up the, the manure of the chicken, chickens getting loose and ruining gardens because that's what they like to do. And so that is, is a part of my job. There's so many pieces to my job, but that is part of it.
Yeah, thank you. I will fess up and say I raised chickens in my backyard. I had a varying number. I don't know that any of them made it the whole 10 years that I kept chickens, to tell you the truth. Hard to tell one barred rock from another. And I would not have necessarily at that time felt great about having to march into city hall and, and pay a permit for it every year. And I'm not sure that that's necessary. I do think we need to have some pretty strong responses to nuisance animals. And, and dogs are by far the biggest problem. My chickens were mostly problem to me, except for the time I got a rooster and they hopped the fence. My neighbors were kind about it and did not cause me grief, but did say, come get your chickens. So yes, have some tiny experience with that. And I guess my question for the ordinance would be if there was a way for us to be looking at these exception parcels that I'm thinking of Mr. Covert's lot that it's in the city, but it's on the very edge and it's, you know, it's a multi-acre lot. It's not really in town. It's on the edge of town. And we have, just the geography of our town leads to quite a lot of parcels that are on the edge that back up to state land or county land or a lot of acreage. And maybe those need to be treated differently from parcels like mine that are in a neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
Mayor. Counsel Randall.
It's interesting that, that it's been pointed out that at least three of us on this side anyway have experienced raising livestock, chickens, goats, pigs, cows, whatever. But I'm not sure about the other side here. But, but I guess what I'm saying is we can relate to the rest of the community that I maybe, maybe they assume that somehow we don't have any shared experiences or backgrounds. But, but so we can, we can understand the, the, the issue we're talking about here. And I think as, as this counsel McLaughlin pointed out, these ordinances do need some review, maybe some refinement, maybe nothing drastic, but they, they, they weren't being looked at. So, that's all I wanted to say.
One other thing, Mr. Mayor. I didn't notice anything about, has the Dals ever had licensing for dogs?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, it's been a while though, right? We don't, we don't any longer?
We, we, we do. That's, that's, as I mentioned at the beginning of the staff report, there was a number of different items or issues that kind of brought attention to both animals, livestock and, and, and dogs.
So that issue may come back later.
Well, most certainly.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure we were clear on that. Yeah.
Control ordinance is, is a very robust part of this process too. And we, we tried to look at this holistically through and through. And we thought it prudent to bring these kind of as a two-step, if you will.
The other thing I wanted to throw out there that Ms. Kruger brought up is, yeah, the number of chickens you have is going to change just based on, that's the way chickens are, you know? You might have four or five and you might have 10 or 12 six months later and you'll deal with that. And through natural attrition, you may get back to four again. But it's just crazy. I know my grandfather, he'd have from six or eight, probably maybe 10, and all of a sudden there'd be 20 out there. But that didn't last all that long. So hard to control those things, you know? And, and you're sure not going to send somebody out there to clip one because you're over the limit.
Well, I just want to comment that the staff came forward with this and I would like to let the audience and citizens know that this actually came up during our goal-setting session in November. So the staff came back with something that they perceived to be a concern of the city council. And so I think we have to understand that. That's not to say that there won't be significant changes or tweaks to this particular proposal. As, as been mentioned, dogs is another category that above and beyond this that will be coming back to the city council in the future. And a question for Nikki that I'm pretty sure you won't be able to know the answer to, but you said that you get complaints about chickens. And I'd be interested to know how many of those complaints, who has been there the longest, the people that own the chickens or the people that are complaining? How, how, I'm sure you don't know the answer to that. I guess I'm suggesting that when people buy a house or buy property, they should know where they're moving and survey the surrounding properties to, to know what's going on.
I'm certainly going to push back on that, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect. If someone has any, anything is causing a nuisance, we have a responsibility to have some limits and some guidance on that. Whether the neighbor has been there, you know, six months or 60 years is, is kind of, I would, I would argue is, is maybe not quite as relevant. It's, it might be different if they were moving to the country or to the county and moving next to, you know, the cattle operation and then complaining about the cows. I get that. But I would say for most neighborhoods, people do have a reasonable expectation of.
I think there's a reasonable expectation too, but I also think there's, it's reasonable to expect people when they buy several hundred thousand dollars for the property where they know where they're going. But you know, maybe that's something we'll have to agree to disagree on.
Fair enough.
Okay. May I answer that, Ms.?
Oh, I'm sorry. You do have an answer, maybe.
I have a question. I agree with both of you. That there can be times when they come in with expectations of, of maybe it didn't bother them with that there's chickens next door until maybe that person hasn't been managing their manure or their storage of, of feed. And then that causes a mice infestation. And then they notice that mice are now coming into their yard and it's coming from that area. So there's other things that come from not maintaining your property and not managing your animals that affect neighbors that whether they like live there six months or six years or whatever, that it can be an issue in the future. Or it could be a pre-existing issue that they didn't see when they moved in because they didn't expect that mice would be a part of the problem. Most people don't.
That was very diplomatic, but I would, after hearing that, I would, I, I think you agreed with Counsel Richardson more than you agree with me.
Wisely, wisely, I would say wisely.
I would.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Two comments that I received from Counsel O'Ring. I just wanted to read for the benefit of the council and audience. The first point was on non-conforming animals. Quote, "The proposed amendment could unintentionally limit the flexibility for owners to renew licenses for new animals, particularly preventing the replacement of possible grandfathered animal of the same type after its death or removal." And then the second comment he had regarding livestock permits. Regarding the appeal process specifically, it may be beneficial to allow the animal to remain in place during the appeal unless there is a significant risk to public health, safety or property.
Okay, at this point, I think we've heard all the comments we're going to be hearing. I do think the staff deserves some feedback as to, you know, where they, where we go from here. I think the, that staff needs some direction as to, to what extent they come back with, with a, with a proposal that is not as far-reaching. I think I'm kind of gathering that among the four of you.
Yes.
Yeah. So maybe we could give the staff some direction on what parts of this proposal they would like to see stay and which parts of it they would like to see go away.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Frankly, it would be extremely helpful if council could weigh in on one through 10, starting on page 102, all 10 of them.
Well, number one is the definition of continuous annoyance. I'm not sure there'd be any issue with that.
I have a comment from the municipal judge who reviewed an advanced copy of this ordinance and actually recommends part B and number one be changed to 10 minutes in every 30-minute period to make it to make it even more, I don't know what the word is, I guess. Well, to reduce the number of, the amount of time from 15 down to 10 minutes in any 30-minute period, which would constitute a continuous annoyance, the municipal judge recommended that change.
Any problem with that, anybody?
No.
Okay, number two is the definition of a household pet, which does not require a permit. Would include pot-bellied pigs. Any issues with?
I'm looking for the page number because I got a couple of, through 10, what is it?
102.
102. Which paper?
I can't find it.
Yeah, maybe you guys could share page 102 there. Number two is again, it's a definition of household pet. And it lists all the animals that fall under household pets and household pets do not require permits.
I think the biggest problem I have with that one is squaring it up with part three, which where you have pot bellied pigs is defined as pets, but chickens, ducks, rabbits cannot be defined as, or not as, as proposed defined as pets.
Would you like to remove pot bellied pigs from the definition of household pet and add them to livestock? Or what would you like to do there?
That would actually make more sense. Correct. Yeah.
But the records show that Matthew Klebs recommended including pot bellied pigs as household pets.
Well, and we go down to livestock and which does require a permit. It seems to me that we may want to add some things to livestock that we have under a prohibited animal such as goats.
I agree.
And again, it also seems to me that we have to tighten up our administrative processes to make sure that we're up to date on who has permits and who doesn't. And, you know, when they're required every year, or whether we're going to have a one time fee and monitoring and making sure that we're up to date with those that are registered. Any problem with goats and horses becoming livestock?
Alpacas.
And alpacas, yeah. And the definition of livestock also says other similarly sized fur bearing animals. Similar, similarly sized is comparing chickens, ducks, rabbits and other, you know, those are small animals. So I think that has to be tweaked.
Right. Is that the, is that council's consensus? You want to add those up? Okay.
That's fine.
Point that was brought up earlier, are chickens and ducks, are they defined as livestock?
They are in this ordinance. Yeah. Yeah, in this ordinance. Yeah.
In this ordinance. Is that the generally accepted definition of chickens and ducks? The one that they're livestock? I, I've never heard that.
Think that's just a semantic thing. We can call it anything that the city council would like to call it. Doesn't, just using the word livestock tends to have a connotation that it involves animals, but you know, we could call them anything at all.
Mrs. Kruger called them poultry. So a separate subdivision.
Sure. We can include poultry in the set of livestock.
Well, rabbits and horses and goats aren't poultry. So just saying.
Yeah, livestock would be poultry plus all of the rest that you mentioned.
All right. Okay. When you take out goats, goats and horses, prohibited animals. So we're prohibiting turkeys and wolves and swine and sheep squirrels, raccoons?
And if we're taking horses out, that's, is that what you said?
And goats.
Well, a donkey or a mule would be basically the same thing. They're named separately in somewhere in here. And they're really, we're talking about the same type of animal. They shouldn't be prohibited.
Mules.
If we're going to take horses out, then donkeys and mules would be taken out as well.
I don't see a word.
Under the current ordinance, I believe donkeys and mules and are all allowed.
Okay. Okay. Number five, is there still a need for a, a
Yes.
Provision for a nonconforming animal?
Yes. But it doesn't mean that it can't include replacements. It's just best practices as informed by the legal research that went into this. You don't see it, but we can, we can add it if that's what the council would like. No problem. Again, I just sort of, sort of remind everybody and council especially, is that staff's approach to this was to throw everything at you and get some good, you know, consensus and get some good feedback, meaningful feedback from the public to, to see what lands. So, you know, staff is not committed to really any provision in here, more or less. So this is very helpful.
Okay. Also, based on the comments from at least two of these, the people that testified, it seems to me that we need to take a closer look at the minimum.
Before we get there, Mr. Mayor, what was, can I just go back to number five on the nonconformity? I will say as, as the lawyer here, yeah, we need to have that provision about nonconformity, but it can include replacement if that's what council wants. I just don't know if that's what council wants.
Catching there somewhere, I'm hearing parts of things that the homeowner would be allowed to replace an animal.
If that's what council wants.
I favor.
What I'm thinking, you know?
So replacement?
If they want to add additional animals, then you know, that's something that we could look at depending on the property, but.
Well, so replacement would be replacing animals that have been, you know, like you mentioned earlier, the, the pony falls down. You have to put it out, but you, you know, your granddaughter wants a pony and you have this pout. That would be replacing like a like animal for a like animal.
Someday you'll understand.
Perhaps, but it, it wouldn't necessarily allow somebody who owns like, let's say, a cattle property to keep getting more cows as if the ordinance doesn't have limitations, right? And so it would just be replacing animals that are currently permitted.
Let, let's back up for a sec. I think maybe we got tangled up. So we've allowed or we put horses, goats, equine beasts of various kinds and goats into the livestock category permitted is, is the, is the, is the guidance.
Yeah, they're not household pets as far as I can tell.
Right. So I'm not going to argue that. But at any rate, there's a definition, then there's prohibited animals. Right. If so, if someone has a cougar on site, for instance, and they have it now, we're not going to like go out and, and net it or put it down. It's like, if you have it and it's not causing a problem, you can still have it, but it is a prohibited animal or nonconforming animal. Correct?
A, a nonconforming animal is an animal that's allowed today, February 24th. Today's the 24th, right? But won't be allowed, let's say July 1st. So cougars are not allowed today.
Got it. Do we have any of those now?
I hope not.
Cougars, nonconforming.
Yeah.
Just in case. Okay. Why don't we, why don't we leave it be? So the replacement issue may not really be an issue because I think we're talking about animals that we are now proposing to permit or allow.
Well, I mean, if we, sure. So, but if council allows, let's say horses as livestock, it's still going to be subject to at least some restrictions. And maybe one of those restrictions is a cap on the number of horses that are allowed. In which case, even if you have a permit for, let's say, two horses, as Mr. Covert said, half an acre seems pretty good. But, you know, we'll look into that. What if you had five horses? Well, each one of those horses over the two horses would be a nonconforming animal.
Thank you very much.
That makes sense? That's an example to illustrate the point that you're asking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we settled on number five?
Do we need the, maybe it's not in this one, but do we need the word grandfathering for an existing? Let's say they've got three horses already and they have room. Do we need to have a grandfather in closet here for existing? I don't know how that would be worded or not. Something to look at.
It's a grandfathering. Another word for that is just nonconformity. And so that would be, that would be captured by this definition as it's currently drafted and it, as it will be drafted when you see it next time. Yeah.
And let me say, you know, I really appreciate the time staff puts into this stuff. And I sometimes wonder why we do so much. And I had this not on my radar as a big topic tonight until I was at lunch with a couple of citizens informed me about horses in the area, you know, so that's kind of where this came from. But you guys do a great job and all of our ordinances, I'm, I'm more in favor of it. Every year I've been in elected office, I've always come in saying, you know, we need to review laws and ones that are out there 20, 30 years, et cetera. Some of them just need to be gone and others have to be moved into the 21st century, you know? So I appreciate the work.
29 years. So, okay. Page 103.
Number six. Again, this is just a substantive criteria for approval of a livestock permit. And so I probably the biggest here would be number two and number three. Frankly, I think it's just number two and number three that are getting any feedback at all. So number two being the setback, call it the setback requirement. But I, you know, honestly, when we were putting this together, I, I felt like having the neighbor's permission was an important part of being neighborly. If, you know, when it comes to having animals around, but if council wants something different there, I'm happy to look at that.
Well, didn't we have a, a couple of comments about the number of square feet per chicken or whatever?
Yeah, that's on number three though. Number two is what I was referring to.
Okay.
Number six, number two, that, that, talking about the 10 foot, 25 foot measured in a straight line. I just heard comments about that. So.
Is that really necessary? I don't think so either.
Is that the standard, whether it's necessary?
Doesn't seem to be necessary, but.
Hearing nothing else.
I, I, if, if you're saying 6.2 point A, I would say.
Yeah.
I would say that's probably not workable, right? How to keep chickens from, you know, more, greater than 10 feet from a fence line.
Well, it's the area where the chickens are kept, not the chickens themselves. So it'd be like the chicken coop.
Yeah. I think that is covered, in my opinion, adequately under 6.2 point B.
So just 25 feet.
And also just the, the list of actionable nuisances, right? If, if someone's taking care of them properly, they're not going to be an issue. If someone's not taking care of them properly, they're going to be an issue regardless of where they. Anyway, that would be my recommendation is strike A.
Okay. Doesn't seem like it's that contentious and it's an easy enough switch. Okay. Number three, please. 6.3. This is the limits on maximum lot size and the number of livestock. The, this table, just to be, you know, again, 100% clear. This table came straight from the LOC's model best practices animal control ordinance. It seems to be consistent with the numbers that I mentioned earlier for nearly, well, all of the different cities that I mentioned having, that have regulations on the lot size or, you know, the numerosity of the animals that are allowed. It seems to be right in the sweet spot. There are some cities that are very comparable, that have much more restrictive. And there are some cities that have the complete opposite, you know, no restrictions whatsoever. I think I heard a number of times from different counselors this evening that it seems like we're all in favor of some restrictions. But maybe that this model ordinance for LOC is tailored for more urban areas, not rural. And so, you know, with that said, I can chop, you know, I can double these numbers, you know, whatever council thinks would make the most sense. But I, I'd like to get some input from our animal control officer and codes enforcement officer on any of the substantive changes that council might want to see there.
I would too. And, but I'm going to throw in my two cents worth first, which is, given that we have included a wide range of animals now under livestock, if I.
We can break it down by, by like species of animals that are considered livestock. You know, we'd have different categories for horses versus chickens.
It's got to be a high number for chickens and rabbits or no number unless there's complaints, in which case then we, we impose limits.
Well, then toss out some numbers and, you know, if anybody has any and we can go from there. Otherwise I can prepare something that, you know, has.
This has no basis in, in much, except to just move the discussion forward. I would say for livestock of, you know, 10 pounds or less per animal, you know, if you have 20 on a lot, 15 on a lot, some large number, that is sort of just a maximum. Just say you can have up to this. If somebody complains, if it's a problem, if you're managing them well, then we have to put a limit, right? That's, that's one way to do it. For large animals, then we might need to be a little bit more thoughtful. And I'm not a horse person as such, but there's going to be some number of, a fraction of an acre per horse that is reasonable, half an acre per horse or something, or an acre per horse, whatever.
Tell you what, we didn't hear anything back, at least the city attorney's office didn't hear anything back from the, from the vets. But I might reach out again, just to ask them more about their opinions on some of this. Trying to get some more expert opinions from relevant subject matter experts on what seems appropriate and, and supportive of the animal health and safety. And I will try to bring something back that is in, keeping in line with the fact that it, these numbers appear to be unduly restrictive for this community. So loud and clear.
Council McLaughlin?
Point of clarification, we're throwing acronyms out. LOC, League of Oregon Cities.
Yes.
That's where he's deriving those figures from.
Thank you. Okay. You might also want to get the input of two people that testified here about horses and chickens on that item that you were going to consult with some vets or city veterinarians. Okay. Number four, 6.4.
Oh, no, I didn't hear any concerns about having, you know, if, if we're looking at, I think it makes sense to have the planning department review matters that impact land use and a commitment by the applicant to keep the area where it'll be open for inspection at reasonable times by the animal control officer. I didn't, I don't think I heard anything about that either. Yeah.
Okay. Number seven.
Number seven.
Police chief's ability to revoke term, permits. Any problem with that one?
No.
And just to be clear, it's only in situations where these issuance criteria are not met.
Right.
Right? Or fail, they were met at the time of issuance, but they no longer continue to be met.
Eight is the right to appeal to municipal court. Any problem with that?
No problem. That should be a natural.
There's not too many other alternatives to that, except for the city council, as I see it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Did we cover that the issuing of permits was going from the city clerk to the police department?
I don't think.
Was that okay with the police department? What'd he say?
Okay.
So that sounds like there needs to be a discussion on that. Yeah.
Okay. Number nine. These are the types of situations that give rise to a public nuisance, including the number of animals exceeding a certain number. Animals that escape like Mr. Covert's horse at least four times a year.
If anything, I.
Abandoned animal?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if anything, I, I think I've only heard support for more of a case by case basis on number nine, two, which, you know, maybe in, you know, having your 1,000 pound boar released once is enough. Maybe four times for a rabbit is not enough. And so maybe we add some, add in some discretion here to, to the, you know, animal control officer or police chief to make that judgment call, you know, as reasonable, maybe even dependent on the species.
I think that's reasonable.
Reasonable.
It kind of lumps in with number seven.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. An abandoned animal. A case where an owner does not maintain his property in a sanitary condition and a carcass more than 24 hours. Will seem pretty reasonable to me. Okay. Penalties, number 10. $1,250. Shall not exceed. There's no minimum fine.
It's just not exceeding 1,250. It could be $1 if the judge wants. And that's all dependent by the judge, by the way.
Okay. Do you feel you have sufficient feedback to?
Yeah, you bet.
Bring this back?
Yeah. Again, this wasn't as much of a huge lift because as Matthew mentioned earlier, as it might seem rather. But as Matthew mentioned earlier, this, you know, staff worked on this in conjunction with the dog control ordinance for the last, you know, year or so. And so all of the meetings that we had was, you know, generally typically addressing both dog control and animal control. And when, when council sees the draft dog control ordinance, when that's ready to come out, you'll notice a lot of similarities with, you know, for example, just one example, the continuous annoyance provisions. Here they mimic there. We wanted those to be in alignment to give our animal control officer and our codes enforcement officer the confidence to go forward and not have to worry, well, under this ordinance, is it 10 minutes? And under this one, is it 15? We wanted all of that to track. So they were developed together. So that's all. Thank you all for your very patient and thoughtful time this evening.
Okay. Is there any other comments by the city council or questions before I declare a five, a seven minute recess? We will reconvene at 10 minutes until eight. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. You're welcome to stick around and hear all about our rock cutting contract and.
Missed anything? Did we miss anything?
Management plan.
Thank you, Joe.
Paper. I only found one or two.
Oh. Oh.
Okay, item 10A, consideration of a, uh, awarding a contract for the East Ninth Street Rock Drill Contract. Before us is our new director of public works. Get away, Dale.
Well, before I start, I'll, uh, make sure that Dave doesn't want to do one last presentation. I guess he's, I guess he says he's good, so.
Yeah, he just, not only did he decline, he was very.
I'll try to make this quick, so.
Okay.
Um.
Favor?
How quick?
The east side or East Ninth Street, um, rock drill contract is a contract that we'd like to be able to implement to help lessen some of the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties. Due to the fact that there's going to be a significant, significant amount of rock excavation for the installation of a new sanitary sewer main and, uh, storm water main, uh, near the intersection of East Ninth Street and Clinton Street up by Hecker Park. I pretty much outlined in the staff report kind of what we had, had encountered out on the site with, uh, one of the adjacent properties, which is an old historic rock house, and some of the discussions that we had with that property owner. And, uh, we felt that the best, um, measure to kind of implement for this would be to do this rock drill contract, which is a pre-drill. It'll be going and drilling three inch diameter holes from the pavement surface down to a depth, uh, at the bottom of the trenches, which is at about 10 feet deep. There is quite a bit of rock that we, we know, so it'll be drilling these three inch diameter holes on a 12 inch square pattern for the width of the trench, about six foot in width for the length of, of those trenches. So by doing that, we're hoping that, uh, we'll be able to bring in a smaller piece of equipment and a smaller rock hammer that it'll have all those pre-drilled holes that will help be able to, um, help the rock fracture and, um, break off and not have to be just a big piece of, uh, equipment out there, just continually just pounding on the rock, trying to get it to, to break. Um, and we're feeling that this is going to, you know, help mitigate that. So with that, we put this contract out to bid. And we received four bids on them. Two of them were not too far above what we had anticipated at about $180,000 contract. But two, two of the bids were way out there. So fortunately, the, the low bid for this project came in at from, uh, McCallum Rock Drilling in the amount of $192,710. With the approval of the supplemental budget at the January 13th city council meeting, there is now a combined $629,929 available in the Fund 55 wastewater collection, uh, underlying items 7630 and 7640, uh, for this project. Therefore, there are adequate funds available for the project. So with that, um, staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with McCallum Rock Drilling for the East Ninth Street Rock Drill Contract Number 2025001 in the amount not to exceed $192,710. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. McCabe? Would you like to make a motion?
I have a question for.
Yes, Council Richardson.
Good evening, Mr. McCabe. Do you feel that there would be impacts, um, to multiple houses, multiple properties, if you were to go ahead just with the, uh, heavy duty rock hammer?
Not, uh, the, right where we're at, that house is right on that corner. And the trench, the sewer trench is right adjacent because we had to realign the sanitary sewer. We had to work with Zayo over the past year to get their, um, fiber line relocated. But the, the path of that, um, sanitary sewer line is kind of right adjacent to that property. And eventually it'll get away from it, but I don't believe that it's, and then it's, the sanitary sewer is for going down East Ninth Street, the, the gravel portion, um, where we put the new water line in, uh, a couple of years ago now. And the storm is going to be going up closer to Hecker Park. So it's like adjacent to the park and it's not so close to the other structures.
It's really that one.
It's that one house. And just what that house is constructed of is stacked rock with mortar, um, you know, filling in the, the joints, uh, from that struck stacked rock.
I don't mean to be difficult, but I'm just wondering, given the price tag, if it's, if there'd be a, a very large delta, uh, difference in the price between spending this money attempting to avoid a problem and reserving, um, you know, half as much, $100,000 to do any repairs or fixes.
But we know there's, we know there's rock, a significant amount of rock out there, and it's going to be pretty much that whole trench. All, all the trenches are going to be rocked, um, hammering. So that by also doing this, uh, rock drill, the, the pre-drill, we're hoping that it's also going to speed up the process too. Um, rather than just sitting there and just pounding rock day after day after day. Depends on what we encounter too, you know, there's what they call blue basalt, and then that's one of the hardest rocks that there is around here. And you can sit there and pound and pound on it, and it just literally turns to dust. It doesn't fracture. So then you'd have to almost call the pre-drill, the, get a rock drill contract, come in and pre-drill it to help with that. So we're kind of using this as a, you know, in multiple facets to, to take care of the.
House or no house, we might still have to be doing this.
It, we very well could result in the same situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with McCallum Rock Drilling for the East Ninth Street Rock Drill Contract Number 2025 dash 001 in an amount not to exceed $192,000, $192,710.
Runyon, I'll second it.
Counselor, uh, moved by Counsel Randall and seconded by Counsel Runyon to award the contract for the Ninth Street Rock Drill. Is there any more discussion or questions?
Just a, a thought to say thank you to Public Works for being responsive to a citizen like that and trying to figure out a solution. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to go on record right now, though, to just say thank you to Dave, and I know I have big shoes to fill. But congratulations to him for his retirement.
Well, how long have you been here?
26 years.
Oh, that. 11 more to go and you'll, you'll match him.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item 11A, uh, resolution regarding the downtown parking management strategy action plan. I'd just like to point out at the outset here that our counselor Ring was unable, as we know, to attend our meeting tonight. And he has, uh, contacted the city manager and myself, asking that this particular study be put off for two weeks till our next council meeting. He has, uh, a couple of issues that he wanted to raise. One had to do with, he was going to propose reducing the amount of off-street parking available that is mentioned and outlined in the study. And secondly, to remove large lot ID 64, which I believe is the city-owned parking lot, um, on that Fifth Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
State office building.
Because it, uh, because of its location from the rest of the downtown. I personally don't have a problem with his request, and it is eight o'clock, and that would shorten our meeting a little bit. I don't think there's any urgency to, to this. Um, I do think our, our consultant is here, isn't he?
Yeah, we have two consultants that we're, we're expecting to go today. But, um, yeah, if we need to push this off, um, I'm, you know, we'd have to, it would, it would be more than two weeks. It'd be more than.
Well, maybe we could do, uh, compromise would be to, uh, the council has questions, uh, to ask you or the consultants' questions, and with the understanding that we're going to put this off until our next council meeting, if not after that, is that acceptable?
Yeah, you'll end up having the discussion twice if you do that. Which we have discussed this at the October 28th meeting as well, so.
Yeah, Mr. Williams was here for that, wasn't he?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, this is, all right, let's just get into it a little bit here. Comments and questions regarding the, the draft, the, the draft of the parking study? You want to introduce our, uh, two consultants?
Yeah, thank you. Um, counsel, Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Um, our two, I'd like to introduce Pete Collins and Owen Ron Kelly of Rick Williams Consulting. Um, I'll get right through this. I know we've had a long meeting already. Um, I think they were going to prepare a PowerPoint, but I think we can skip right through that, maybe just get to the nitty gritty on this. This process, as we discussed, um, this is kind of just, um, touching on the discussion that we had back in October. At that October meeting, there were no changes, uh, requested by council to be made, so we moved ahead. Uh, we were going to get this on a January meeting, but it was bumped due to, due to busy schedules. This, this staff report goes over the process overview for, um, putting this together. Uh, there was an advisory committee that was established over, um, last year, uh, 20, uh, 2024. Uh, Counselor Ring was part of that advisory committee. Um, we met four different times. We also had an open house, uh, September 30th, kind of going over all this. Um, there was two documents that came out of that. There was a guiding principles document, which was kind of the document the advisory committee used to establish these guidelines. Also from that, there was a, uh, uh, parking summary, a data summary, so going through and pulling all the, the data together. Two different days, we collected data, uh, two 10-hour days in May. From there, there was a summary of findings. You can find those in your staff report as well. And what came out of this was, uh, 15 different strategies, and you can find those on page 19 of your packet. Um, these are broken into three separate categories, and, um, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Well, I would like to, um, ask the consultants and you, whoever's best suited to answer. Mr. Rings, if I understand Mr. Ring's concern was that 88% of the 1,200 parking spaces or whatever were on, he considered private property and not really open to public parking.
Yeah, so to that, um, when you're showing, and, and this is a strategy that we established from the very beginning with our advisory committee. When you're showing the entire inventory of a downtown parking system, you're looking at everything. You're looking at on-street and off-street parking. It clearly spells out in this, in, in all the work that we've done, the city only owns 12% of these parking lots. The agency owns a couple of them, but what private parking lots do is they are kind of an untapped resource for additional overflow. In the event you start to see some developments in town that potentially could be impacting your. In the event you start to see some developments in town that potentially could be impacting your downtown parking supply. It does open up the opportunity for a property owner to potentially charge for parking spaces. And I think we do see that happening at times. So to say, to take the off-street parking spaces away from that system really doesn't give you the full, full, full spectrum of your entire downtown parking system. We were very clear though in the reports spelled out on on table four in the data summary. We do call out which are public, we call out the percentage of which are public. But yeah, really, you know, taking them out of it, we wouldn't give a real account of of what our parking system really is. Speaking of the lot, I think it's lot number sixty four, it's the Department of Health Services Lot that was requested to be removed from the system. But it's also a valuable parking lot that we have and it actually gets quite busy on a Saturday because of Saturday market. So it's something that, I mean, we're, it's only two blocks off of off of Third Street. So we do feel that it is still a very valuable piece. It's like sixty-five spaces of our of our downtown parking system. So it may not be centrally located to our businesses and our retail spaces on a, on Second and Third Street, but it does. It is a value to our our overall system. So yeah, hopefully, I think that addressed Counselor Ring's questions. But I'm happy, Owen and Pete, I mean, you guys can help me fill in any details that I may have missed.
I think you, can, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I I thought you did a great job explaining that, Josh. I I would say that, you know. Part of this, part of this whole effort is to look at the whole parking system in in totality and. While the off, the the private off-street system isn't in our control. It certainly is a great resource and we, and we know from our data that there is plenty of people who are parking on-street for extended period of time. We we assume that, you know, those are employees and ideally, we would love to get those employees into private off-street facilities, especially if they're. You know, if it's part of their workplace, if we can do that and free up that on-street space for our customers and visitors and make it for as inviting for them as possible. So the the point with this study was to try to. Get our arms around, you know, public resources, to identify private resources and to hopefully. Create an environment where they can open up their parking facilities to users beyond just their customers and employees. But to, as Josh said, to to make those spaces possibly available to other employees. If if the need arises, so it's, it's just kind of creating that avenue for a shared use. It's it's one of the strategies within the plan itself, actually.
Thank you, I I. Now that you, Mr. Ring, Counsel Ring's concern, I think, involves off-street parking. And there's probably a similar number of on-street parking spaces, is it about the same number?
Ah, yeah, I think there's probably like two hundred off or something like that. Yeah, probably two hundred more off-street.
Yeah, and speaking of two hundred, I think as Mr., as Owen has pointed out. There's about two hundred spaces where people are parking for more than five hours on-street. Which leads, and I brought this up at back in October when Mr. Williams was here, that that's a lot of spaces that are taken up by employees of the businesses.
Yep.
And it's that way in every town I've ever seen, unless it's regulated either through chalking of tires or parking meters or something like that.
Yeah, and that's, that's another statistic. We have, you know, ninety-eight percent of our system, ninety-nine percent is unregulated. So no timed parking or ADA parking spaces that we have. Court courthouse has a couple reserves parking spaces, but other than that, it's, it's kind of wide open.
And I would agree that the parking lot at the, over on Fifth Street is two blocks from downtown. I don't see that as any big deal.
Yeah, that's, that's overflow for City Hall too. City Hall employees, when when our lot is full, that's where we park.
Council Richardson.
It's three blocks from City Hall, it's five blocks from the proposed Federal Street Plaza. Make of that what you will, according to my Google aerial map here. My question to you, Josh, and to the consultants would is. Were we to. Strike those units as Counselor Ring has requested, were we to strike those from the calculation? Would it change your recommendations markedly in what we do about our parking plan downtown?
If we're talking about, so there's the one lot. Maybe not so much, but if we're talking about striking eighty-eight percent of our off-street parking spaces. There may just be more level of urgency to maybe some adopt some of these. But I think Owen, I mean, you can, we can speak on that. I mean, that's not. I think we have adequate parking spaces on-street, so striking those out of the, out of it probably wouldn't be a big impact to our implementation. It's just quite a big difference from the last nine months of of the documentation and the data that we pulled together. But I can't see if that would be too detrimental to this.
I agree, I, my, my one thought is I, you know. This is, this is a plan for the entire downtown and and both public and private off-street do work well with each other. They they help balance the system and by removing the concept of of private off-street parking from your parking management plan. You know, in in my opinion, of course, seems a bit short-sighted and and it, it doesn't allow for. A crucial element in that and that's making. What we want to do is try to take advantage of the existing parking in the most efficient way we can. Parking is expensive to build. We, what we don't want to do is is create a downtown full of service parking lots that people have to walk past. The idea is that we, if we can put more people in the existing parking that we have in an efficient manner. It makes for a better land use, it makes for a better walking environment, makes for. A a better use of land, really, so less vehicle storage, more active use, more residents, more retail, more restaurants, all those things. And so that's my little bit of pushback on this, but there is that strategy piece in there about that shared use of private supply. You know, I think it's an important element, but certainly for you guys to decide.
I have a question to follow up on Counsel Richardson's comment. I, I know you're, you have a, you're a very experienced firm when it comes to parking studies, you've done many of them. And is there such a thing as best practices? And if there is, your, do your other clients usually include off-street private lots as being part of the inventory?
Most certainly, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's a really big piece of it. And and Pete, if you want to share, feel free, I'm, I'm talking a bunch here, but. One of our clients, I'll just point out in in particular, they've done an excellent job with the, the private off-street supply. It's Oregon City is one of the towns that we've worked in and they have very limited off-street parking in downtown. And so it, they've used the private supply to really augment access for people in downtown, just because they're very limited. And what has been created is this peer-to-peer kind of sharing relationship where they've. The, our consultancy, we went in and we identified the available space that they had. And said how many spaces they have available during the peak hour. And that created at least a starting point for a conversation about how that parking could be shared between each other. And it was, it's really turned into quite a kind of great, great grassroots resource for them in this, in that particular community, so.
Mr. Collins, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I would, I would just echo what Owen and Josh are saying, that I think the off-street supply in the private sector is kind of a release valve. So it's, it's not necessarily an immediate solution, but if you're looking to move people off-street, it's a, it's a great way, it's a great vehicle to create more efficiency. Otherwise, you might have to expedite some of the other tasks or or strategies a little bit fast, a little bit faster. And then lean upon your, your public supply a little bit more. So I think having that off-street supply in the private sector is a, is a great thing to have in your back pocket, essentially.
Other question, yeah, Counsel Runyon?
Yeah, I've got a few and mostly positive. Although. The cover of the city parking lot plan is the county courthouse, it seems like it should have been City Hall. I don't.
Yeah.
Must have been a reason, okay. I like the change of downtown parking management district instead of the central business zone boundary. I think that's a good idea on page thirty-one of one twenty-seven. Paragraph ten on page thirty-two. Had a question there, I think. Accessory and non-accessory parking access and the new parking built. Or maybe it means build, does not impose any unintended accessory restrictions. On the use of that, operations of that parking built, I'm not sure what that means. First paragraph, action statement, page thirty-two of one twenty-seven, which is page ten of the report.
Yeah, so Owen, if you can assist me on this, this is the discussing AC three. Which is the Shared Use Parking Code Guidelines, talking about accessory parking.
Yeah. Oftentimes with development, parking is. There's a parking requirement associated with the development when it takes place based on the type of land use it is and the size of. The, the property going in, so it's, you know, it's two point five spaces per thousand square feet or something to that effect. And that parking then becomes what we call accessory to that use. And so hardware store goes in, they put it up, it's, it's two thousand square feet and you have to build three. Three stalls per thousand square feet, so they have to build, you know, sixty stalls for this thing. And so in in this instance, we would. The whole point of like having the accessory. The relax. Relaxing the accessory designation for these parking, existing parking supplies allows them to be shared use. And so there's a lot of, oftentimes when we go in communities, there is accessory clauses in their city code that prohibits. Uses from sharing their parking supply. And so this piece was intended to, is to address that in saying. We want you to be able to share your parking. So that sixty stalls for that, that hardware store, they only use thirty of those spaces. So we want, we want to be able to say that. They should be able to lease an additional twenty stalls to the apartments next door or something to that effect. So that was the thing that we were trying to address with that accessory designation.
So that was, leads to my question, do we currently allow private landowners that have parking areas to charge? Is that currently okay or not even a rule around it so they could do it?
Wouldn't be really something that we, that we regulate by any means. I guess if they're still providing their, their minimum requirements on side, if they can still provide that.
So we would.
Which is an issue.
Something in there to clarify that they can do this, but there has to be certain requirements.
Yeah.
For the space. Couple of others, I can just go on down here. I like on page twelve of the report, thirty-four of one twenty-seven, minimal costs to do signage and things like that. Page thirteen, thirty-five of one twenty-seven, parking tees, do we use that now?
We don't.
And I really like those when I go to other communities because it gives you that outside vision, you can really tell where you're parking at, so those are a good idea. I like that very much. Let's see here. I remember seeing the column, the paragraph or so about over five, five hours or more at one place. But on average, the report says weekdays, two hours and forty-one minutes was the surveyed amount. And of one car staying in one spot and two hours and twenty-three minutes on Saturdays. That was on page sixty-three of one twenty-seven. So it doesn't seem like we have a lot of people overdoing it. And again, getting back just like our previous thing, I really don't want to get into making rules we don't need to make if we're okay. And the first paragraph or two talks about low to moderate parking in our downtown currently. But I don't see a problem at all with a sign in the high-density areas that whether it was two hours or three hours, you know, I don't know what's best. I'm thinking three, but maybe it's two to keep them moving out of the central business core. But I, I think that's a good idea, the minimal. The other signs we would need would be to have points, pointed signs more, more often to public parking.
Exactly.
Where that is. When I was in business in this community, we had, it was verbally, I don't think it was a, a rule, but it was put out to all the business people. Tell your employees to park in the public parking lot and we don't hear that anymore.
Right.
We need to do some public relations along those lines. And I think if the, if the businesses themselves downtown, they've got employees parking in front of their stores now. They might move them at lunchtime or something, but, but maybe we need to do an emphasis on that, getting those cars to public lots that are going to be working all day.
But that, I think, if I might. Been my experience that that does work, but it only works if it's continually enforced, not enforced, it's continually. Raised by the employers and and acted on. Many times it works for about a week and then it goes back to the usual, but that's, that's a good suggestion.
So that's something our Main Street and Chamber and stuff can help with on that kind of thing. And that, that leads me into that if we're going to have. Rules of saying two-hour parking in this block with arrows pointing down at the ground, like it said, I read everything, Roger, you know that. We're talking about enforcement.
Yep.
So are we talking about, it's not mentioned in here, but it's something we need to discuss. Are we talking about an additional traffic employee like we had years and years ago? Who's going to handle enforcement of this sort of thing because we're, then we're talking about real dollars and is it a part-time or full-time position? So those are some things we're going to have to discuss as well, depending on the signs we put up. And the last thing I'll mention, and I'm very glad to see it in here, because when I was a young man, we lost a young lady in this community who was, I think she worked at Penny's and she parked in the public lot. Off First Street, just down from the Granada and and I'm not going to say her name to put it out there again, but. Those of us older in the room know, know the name well. And she was found across the river. Some days later, you know, so lighting is mentioned in here for our public lots. And I know you've talked a little bit about that on First Street in the area of the transportation center in another conversation. But that's, that's an item I want to spend money on and have our city lots lit up.
Yep. And that's actually, thank you for all those great points.
The next report will have the City Hall on the front page.
No, maybe, maybe we can get that changed.
We can fix that.
Final, final it, I think, do that. Great points, thank you. I think, you know, touching on the, the, the parking lots that we have back there, there was actually when we were having our advisory committee. Just going around the group, asking them, you know, their thoughts on parking. They did mention that, you know, there is, you know, people do have this, you know, maybe feel scared a bit to use those back lots because they're so dimly lit. Even though the trees are wonderful back there, they do provide quite a bit of shade. And I think with not having them lit, we're not, we're not promoting those parking lots either.
During certain times of the year, like now, where it's darker sooner, you know, yeah, lighting is extremely urgent in my view.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm not sure that we're asking for any changes other than the couple that Counsel Runyon has suggested. And can we put this back on the agenda or march?
We, we, we certainly could if that's council's direction. If council also feels that Counselor Ring's comments were were answered in address, you could elect to move forward as planned tonight.
How does the, the council feel, just, we're not voting on anything tonight, obviously, we decided we postponed that till Counselor Ring is with us. But in general, how do you feel about in those, the high-use areas, which really are not above the average timeline? But you feel about if we did put a sign up, two hours or three hours, what, what are you, you're thinking?
Well, I, I gotta get back to the question that you raised and that is how do you enforce it?
Yeah, you gotta have enforcement, so.
Without the enforcement. I. Unless you say suggested time limit. unless you say suggested time limit, two hours or something like that?
I think, I think you can put the sign up and then figure out how much enforcement you, you need afterwards, because we'll find out it's not working. And then, then we'd have to address that issue, but I just want it to be on the table.
And if I, if I may add, I think one of the, the intents here is to identify, you know, the, you really have a holistic view of the parking inventory that we have downtown with the specific detail, off-street, on-street, public, private, et cetera, and identify a whole host of strategies to effectively manage and utilize that inventory and that total asset to the maximum extent possible. The way we'd go about deploying that is the, the biggest bang for our buck. And so we may start out with, with signs, it might be lighting and maybe a couple other different things as our downtown evolves and ideally grows. And so as we deploy and actually use some of these strategies or techniques, you know, staff will work on, you know, vetting, you know, these exact kind of questions and working out what was going to be the most effective to accomplish what we're seeking out to accomplish and bring in city council as, as needed and as appropriate kind of through that process. So I think these comments, comments are great. I just also want to be clear that we're probably not going to see these signs going up, you know, next week. You know, it'll be that continual assessment of the downtown parking environment and what is needed, when and where.
And I would think that if we did right away, start getting the word out to businesses one way or another, to encourage their employees to use public parking, we may see a huge change right away.
Yeah, yeah, and to your point, I mean, there's this, there's this level, and we write about it in this report that talks about, you know, there's, there's this code enforcement aspect, but there's also this, you know, the city being ambassadors to parking more so. And it's just, you know, those reminders, it's getting stuff up on our website, you know, pamphlets around the community, you know, you know, letting those business owners hand them out to their, their employees. And then, yeah, you know, I think there's, there's some low-hanging fruit here. And I think this gives us the opportunity, once we start seeing, you know, an increase of, of parking downtown, it gives us an opportunity to implement those things.
And I would just offer up, on top of that, that, that was our intent with this report and the, and the recommendations that are here. These, these are not intended to be big dynamic changes for the downtown. We, we feel like this report, you know, meets the, the city where they are and in their stage of evolution when it comes to parking management, using a lot of best practices here. And as Josh said, just trying to address some of those low-hanging fruit here.
Yeah.
Okay, do, I think Mr. Ring's concerns have been addressed. I'm not saying that they've been addressed to his satisfaction, but I, assuming that this comes back in two weeks or four weeks, he'll have ample, ample opportunity to make his points clear on the issue of the, the parking lot on Fifth Street and the private off-street parking spaces.
Yeah, so I guess for staff's direction here, do you want me to just put the same staff report and pack it into the upcoming council meeting? I guess some direction for me as to what, what exactly, why, why we're holding up the adoption.
Right. Well, I, I think we should hold it up just to hear what Mr. Ring has to say out of consideration and respect for his position.
Okay.
Even though I might not necessarily agree with it, that's up to you guys to have a vote.
Right.
Any problems?
No problem.
Do you need to make a motion to do that or just?
I don't know that we need the consultants back again for the next meeting, or do you think we need to? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to address.
We'll have the minutes from this meeting in the packet.
Unless they really want to come.
We can afford them.
I could tell the, the, go ahead, Mr. Kara.
Yeah, just wanted to address Counsel Randall's question from a moment ago. If Council desires to pump this to a future meeting, no motion required.
Okay. Okay, Josh? Matthew, okay? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Owen and Pete.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Okay.
Well, you've been shoveling paper all night.
All right, item eleven B, consideration of a resolution to execute a joint grant management agreement with Clickatet County, Mr. Clebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This joint grant management agreement is one of the requirements associated with our EDA grant and the project at the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport to build the training hangar associated with Columbia Gorge Community College in Stub and various private lots. Just on Friday, and Mr. Mayor, if you, if you may pass that down, I received a resolution detailed in our packet as Exhibit C, which is Clickatet County's authorization of this joint management agreement. As I mentioned, this is a requirement of the EDA grant and details how the city and the county are going to manage this grant collectively or jointly. The counterpart over at Clickatet County is their commission chair, Lori Zoller. Clickatet County does not have a county administrator or county manager, and so the board chair serves in that role. So Lori Zoller and I have been coordinating and working on this, along with one of her staffers, Richard Foster. So this evening, I'll be looking for authorization from the Council to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash zero one zero, authorizing me to execute this joint grant management agreement with Clickatet County as already approved by their Board of Commissioners. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. A lot of this stems from a template that the EDA provides and again, helps us manage this grant as we move forward and execute.
Questions or comments for Mr. Clebs?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. So it's a, it's a, it's a great deal for the airport and for the, the community in terms of airport development, and that's, that's all to the good. My question, City Manager, is do we need to be at all mindful that this is a federal grant? If I read my notes properly?
Certainly, one of the contacts at the EDA, I was actually in touch with them last week about how we are from, from his seat in the EDA, how we should be thinking about and how cautious we should be with moving forward with this project, given some of the federal changes with different federal programs such as the EDA. And his comment was from his seat and what he knows, and it's an evolving situation, is we should continue to push forward on this grant. One of the key components here is hitting the construction season that is coming up. As we've seen with a couple different projects, every year that goes by, cost escalations go up. And so it's kind of stay the course and keep moving forward until we hear otherwise.
Is this a reimbursement? Is this grant paid on a reimbursement basis or is they cut us a check upfront?
So I believe that this grant is reimbursement-based, somewhat uniquely for projects at the airport. This is managed in large part over by Clickatet County itself. And so the, the city really operates and, and, and looks at and manages the books and the airport operations. But it's this grant in particular that kind of, you know, the Clickatet County is taking, taking lead in a lot of these elements, and so they'll be running this grant over on their side.
Well, I guess, let me just cut to the chase, we're in uncharted waters with regard to the way the federal government's being run. And if it's on a reimbursement basis and we spend five million dollars, or I guess our share would be two and a half, do you feel there's a, a, a large, a medium, a smaller, an unknown amount of risk for us being on the hook and Feds deciding, no, by golly, they're not going to honor this agreement?
I mean, that's a, that's, that's a very excellent question and a difficult one to answer. Where, I guess what my response would be is that Clickatet County has put the civil component of the project out to bid, but has not put out the actual hangar construction. And it's my intention not to award or bring that award for approval before the city council until we have that bid process complete for the airport hangar, the college hangar as well. We know the total scope and the total cost of the entire project. And during that time, we will keep a careful eye on any indications from the federal government that they, they won't adhere and uphold to the grant documents that we've agreed to. I think one of the things that gives me a reassurance, I guess, is that these funds have been awarded and we have a contract in place. It hasn't, and a contract in place in particular, it's not just a, you know, you know, you've received this funds and, and they're coming down the pipeline eventually. There, there's still that, that cause for concern though, that the federal government may claw back or rescind some of these pieces. But again, the contact at the EDA that I have, the point person for this grant in particular, said to stay the course.
So I would like my fellow counselors to just be really aware, or at least thoughtful, that there's a risk here of some unknown, a sort of risk, some unknown magnitude, not magnitude, but likelihood of risk. I think the, the magnitude is known, it's two and a half million dollars. We go forward with this, that's got to be on all of us. This is not, you know, the staff taking the risk, this is us taking the risk.
This is, I might also add, this may be one of the, the dynamics of the blessings and, and the curses of an Oregon airport located in the state of Washington. If such an event did happen, there are two entities who are jointly involved in this. And so those impacts would be felt both by Clickatet County and the city of the Dells. And I would imagine we would make full use of our resources to reach out to representatives and legislators in both states to, to help address such an event.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yep, let's rock.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I can do it.
Unless Counsel Richardson scared everybody off.
I think we just need to be, we just man up on this and say, look, if we're going to, you know, it's, it's an unknown amount of gamble, but it is some amount of gamble.
That'd be under discussion, there's no motion on the floor yet?
There is no motion on the floor yet.
So it'd be under discussion. Once we make a motion, because he's called for a motion.
Yep, man.
Okay.
Okay. Move to approve Resolution number twenty-five dash zero one zero, Resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a joint grant management agreement with Clickatet County on behalf of the city of the Dells.
McLaughlin will second.
Been moved by Counselor Runyon and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to, to adopt the resolution executing a joint grant management agreement with Clickatet County. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?
Neat.
Of course. Or three to one? Yeah, three to one. Okay. Item eleven C is consideration of a city loan to provide matching grant funds for the tea hangers at the airport, Mr. Renard.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow. The, another project at the airport, we've got, we received our one-point-six-nine million-dollar Connect Oregon Grant this previous cycle for building two rows of tea hangers, which I've previously brought before you guys. The Connect Oregon Funds require a thirty percent, thirty percent match and city is providing, lost my notes. Have a total of seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand in match that we need to come up with, that we need to provide for this, one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand is being provided from each, the city and the county as a grant. And then the city is, I'm asking for a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar loan on a five-year term at four and a half percent interest, which will be paid back through the revenue from the twenty tea hangers that will be built. And the projected rents right now are four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month on these, bringing in about fifty-four-thousand dollars a year per building, which will adequately pay down that five-year note quite quickly for that type of building. And then it becomes another income stream for the airport.
Could you talk on the microphone a little?
Oh, sorry, I'm just, I feel like I'm loud. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Renard?
No.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Same question, sorry, Mr. Mayor, same question as my previous line of inquiry.
Do you have any comment about the risk we're taking entering?
So I think one of the, just if I may, I think one of the distinctions here is this is a state grant.
Not a federal.
And what was the source of the state grant? Was it, was it?
Connect Oregon. Connect Oregon Funds for this one. So we, there are no federal funds associated with this one.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
Mayor Mayes, I'll make a motion to move.
Mr. Mayor, there was one comment from Counselor Ring, I wanted to add in. And so the, the loan payments will begin in April twenty-twenty-six. But Jeff, how quickly or how, how quickly do you anticipate leasing up the twenty tea hangar units? I mean, can you speak to the waiting list that we have?
As of today, I've got eighteen on a waiting list. I've got multiple phone calls from out, people outside of the area who are a little apprehensive about just even adding their name to the waiting list because it has moved quite slowly. I did work through six names today. We had two, two vacancies that we have, that should be filled tomorrow or by the first of the month. But to answer your question, we'll be, inside of twelve months, we'll be a hundred percent occupied. Hood River has the same waiting list and same boat down there. I mean, there's a number of people in, in our area that want in. And in fact, I just moved my own airplane out of a hangar so that somebody with a bigger airplane than mine could actually have the, the hangar to keep these people moving to our, our community.
With minimal risk of not filling those up, so there's always someone in the background.
There is such a need in the Northwest. I mean, if you get back in the Midwest, there's actually, there's hangers available, but in the Northwest, you can't find a hangar. I mean, everybody's on a waiting list.
Did you make a motion?
Not yet.
Oh, I thought you were going to.
Well, I was, but we had a, an addition to the record. So I'll go ahead, Mayor Mayes, to move to direct the City Manager to execute the loan with the Columbia Gorge, excuse me, Regional Airport in the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for the balance of the match funds required for the Connect Oregon Grant, C zero nine dash zero zero six. I think that, no, C oh nine dash zero zero six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor McLaughlin and seconded by Counselor Richardson to execute the loan with the airport for three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. And now, the City Council of the City, we're done, right? Yep. The City Council of the City of the Dells will now meet in an executive session in accordance with ORS one ninety-two dot six-six-zero-two-H to consult with Council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return and welcome the audience back. We expect the.